Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM on Monday, August 18th. We are opening this public hearing for the acceptance of the Public Infrastructure CDBG grant. I invite John Cleveland to the stand. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm John Cleveland. For those who probably mostly at home, who might be watching, who haven't seen me before, I'm President of Community Dynamics Corp. And actually been working here in Limerick since the 1990s, I believe. And I'm helping you presently on a grant from the Community Development Block Grant Agency for water and sewer work on Emory Corner Road. Let me explain for a minute for those who aren't familiar why we're having a public hearing. It is required through the state Community Development Block Grant Program that during this phase, which is called Phase Two, which is when we're putting all documents together, environmental reviews, so that the state can then send the Board of Selectmen an agreement to sign for the grant that they have for you. So this is an opportunity to inform the public about the project once again before we get going into the construction phase. And it's also an opportunity for the public to ask questions or have some discussion about what the project is so they're familiar with it. I think because this has been a little while and the project has changed since the beginning, I should take just a few minutes to give everyone just a little history because this is not exactly the same project that you heard or the community heard when we first requested the funding for the project. So I'll give you some history and backup on it. So originally, in about 2023, early 2024, this was considered a larger project. The project included a replacement of water and sewer lines. The area that we were looking at was the Emory Corner Road from near the intersection with Washington Central Avenue up to Watson Hill Road and then down Watson Hill Road. But it also included going in an easterly direction down Central Avenue to about Dana Avenue where the church is to replace water and sewer line as well. That original project was in the neighborhood of $2 million. All replacement of hundred-plus-year-old water and sewer lines that were in very poor condition. So to try and do that project, in about 2023, we did an income survey of the area because for that Community Development Block Grant, at least 51% of the folks have to meet the low-income standard. We did the income standard and it far exceeded that in that particular area. Also, in that time period, which was a very important thing that the town did, that the town set aside some matching money for potential future grants like this Community Development Block Grant. It totals about $300,000 right now. That was critically important because these grants require a cash match. If a community doesn't have it, you're not eligible to move forward. Since Limerick had that cash match, it was very important and critical in getting the grant, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. At the same time, let me add, the Community Development Block Grant maximum amount is $1 million. The total project that we were looking at, the larger one, was estimated at about two middle. So obviously, that wouldn't have been enough. So we also applied to what you may be familiar with as congressionally-directed spending funds that come from your delegation. Some people remember them as earmarks in the older days, but that's what your Congress people can access for projects in their state. We applied to Senator Collins for $1.6 million for this larger project, and she did get it into the Senate budget. So it was included and was in there in the Senate budget in 2024. In the application of the Community Development Block Grant in 2024, the community didn't get granted on the first round. They now do them in two-year blocks, year one and year two. But Limerick was put on the so-called wait list for the second year, which was 2025, to get granted. In the meantime, an election occurred in 2024, and in 2025, the Congress eliminated all congressionally-directed spending, including the $1.6 million that you were allocated. So that was wiped out. So when 2025 came around for the second year, Community Development Block Grant had four communities on the waiting list, Limerick being one of them. But they all wanted $1 million, and they only had $2 million. So not everyone was going to get funded. So I was able to start a conversation with the Community Development Block Grant Department and explained where we were and also explained that we could cut the project, reduce the project, and if we got the $1 million grant plus about $300,000 the community already had in hand, that that would most likely be sufficient to do the project. That really worked to the community's advantage for two reasons. One is the other communities didn't have their match money. And because they didn't have their match money, some of it because they didn't get their federal dollars, but others because they didn't put any up themselves, or very little, they were not eligible. The second reason was the project that we were looking at on Emory Corner Road, as you know, is the main water line from the wells to the entire system. And there's a section there on Emory Corner Road, 100-plus years old, not in good shape, that really is the spine that serves the whole system. And because it did that, not only does it serve the Emory Corner Road area, but it also benefits the rest of the town in being able to assure that a good quality drinkable water is always there and reliable. Because of those things, we were able to rank higher, and the community received an award of $1 million or slightly less. So what we're doing now in this process is doing all of the administrative paperwork that needs to get done and providing an opportunity for public discussion about the project going forward. So I provided maps to show you the revised product, project. And on the bottom is Washington Avenue and Central Avenue where they join up with Emory Corner Road. The blue dashed line that goes slightly beyond Watson Hill Road, that's the water line. That's the old part of the water line. That would be replaced by a new 12-inch water line, which would connect just beyond Watson Hill to the new 12-inch line that was put in there at an earlier date. And on Washington Street, you already have replaced some time ago with some grant money a 12-inch line. So that would create a substantial conduit or distribution line for the water that would serve the entire system. There's also in green there, an existing section of sewer line, sewer main, which is also in very bad condition. It's about 400 feet in length. That would also be replaced. There would be one new sewer main, manhole put in and replace an existing one to meet current standards, one at either end of those lines. Then at the top of Emory Corner Road, going off to your left there on the map, on Watson Hill Road, there'll be about 500 feet of, 440 feet, excuse me, of new water main installed there, 8-inch line. This line would service that area that's currently serviced by about a 2-inch galvanized pipe, which is not really allowed anymore. So this would provide them with good, safe water, plus built to a large enough scale that in the future, if it needed to be extended, you'd have enough capacity there. This entire project is estimated to be a little less than $1.3 million going forward. So that's what we're looking at for a project. I speak about the timeline. After this meeting, and we send in the information from the public hearing to the Community Development Block Grant Office, there should be an agreement coming to you, the board, to sign for the $1 million grant. So then that will be legally committed to you, and they have access to the money to do that. The next stage after this, as required by Community Development Block Grant, is to select an engineer to do design work and implementation. The request for proposals have been sent out to quite a few engineering firms in the region. They're due back September 3rd, I think, or 4th. And they'll be reviewed and a selection will be made and recommended to the Board of Selectmen. Once they're onboard, then they can finish up the design work, help get the bid documents out, get those bid documents out at the best time to go out to bid. Some ways, maybe December, well, maybe more January-ish. Get those back in, hopefully with a good bid, as the contractors are looking for work for the next year. And if they're within the budget, Board of Selectmen can enter into a contract with the expectation that we start early spring and have it done before the end of summer, new system. Why don't I leave it there for a moment, see whether there are any questions?
I think the one question that I have is, this will be, obviously include tearing up the road to access the water lines, correct?
Yeah.
With Emory Corner Road just being paved in 2023, would that whole road get an overcoat like the Hollandville project did? Get an overcoat so that it's even and not like a zebra line like we were worried about with Hollandville? I know it's minor, but I just wanted to ask.
It's an excellent question. When we did the Hollandville project in '23, in that project, of course, we had water and sewer run on each side of the road, so dug up most of the road. It was first anticipated that they would just pave what they broke up, but so much of the road was broken up, it made sense just to pave the whole road. I think it cost a little bit more money, but there was some funds available. There was a change order to the contract, and so the whole road was done. But I think right at the beginning in the process and the design, that should be a question put to the design, to the engineers, and say, you know, how much of the road is going to have to be broken up, A? And then B, if it looks like quite a bit, how much would it cost just to pave the whole thing?
Okay. Any other questions? I see no other questions.
Okay. Well, I'm excited about looking forward to another great project here in Limerick in improving your water and system and sewer system even further.
Thank you, John.
Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed. We will re-meet at 7:00 PM for our normal select board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. Nice to see you guys.
All right. The time is 6:19. The public hearing will be officially closed.
Good evening. The time is now 7:00 PM and we are back to our normally scheduled Select Board meeting. Please join me in the flag salute.
I look for a motion to approve the July 7th, July 21st and August 4th meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
All in favor.
Alright. Motion to accept the warrants. We only had payroll this week, so we will have to...
No, we had a... There was a payable... So I think a motion will accept the payroll warrant and the payable warrant with one check being held back. I think that's the way it was finally signed.
Yep. Motion to second. Any discussion?
All those in favor.
Alright. Motion to accept the warrants. We only had payroll this week, so we will have to...
No, we had a... There was a payable... So I think a motion will accept the payroll warrant and the payable warrant with one check being held back. I think that's the way it was finally signed.
Yep. Motion to second. Any discussion?
All those in favor.
Alright. Motion to accept the warrants. We only had payroll this week, so we will have to...
No, we had a... There was a payable... So I think a motion will accept the payroll warrant and the payable warrant with one check being held back. I think that's the way it was finally signed.
Yep. Motion to second. Any discussion?
All those in favor.
Alright. Motion to accept the warrants. We only had payroll this week, so we will have to...
No, we had a... There was a payable... So I think a motion will accept the payroll warrant and the payable warrant with one check being held back. I think that's the way it was finally signed.
Yep. Motion to second. Any discussion?
All those in favor.
Alright. Motion to accept the warrants. We only had payroll this week, so we will have to...
No, we had a... There was a payable... So I think a motion will accept the payroll warrant and the payable warrant with one check being held back. I think that's the way it was finally signed.
Yep. Motion to second. Any discussion?
All those in favor.
Alright. Would somebody read the announcements, please?
The Planning Board has received a conditional use renewal application for Novel Energy Solutions 549 Dole's Ridge Road Community Solar Garden Array at MAP 43 Lot 6 and 6A Lymn, Maine. There will be a site walk on Wednesday, August 20th at 6:00 PM with a public hearing to follow at 7:00 PM at the Municipal Building. The Select Board will meet on Tuesday, September 2nd at the fire station at 7:00 PM for a special town meeting.
Good evening, the time is now 7:00 PM and we are back to our normally scheduled Select Board meeting, please join me in the flag salute. I look for a motion to approve the July 7th, July 21st and August 4th meeting minutes. Second, motion to second, any discussion? All in favor. Motion to accept the warrants. We only had payroll this week, so we will have to...
No, we had a... There was a payable... So I think a motion, we accept the payroll warrant and the payable warrant with one check being held back. I think that's the way it was finally signed.
Yep. Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor. All right. Would somebody read the announcements, please?
The Planning Board has received a conditional use renewal application for novel energy solutions, 549 Dole's Ridge Road Community Solar Garden Array at MAP 43 Lot 6 and 6A Limerick, Maine. There will be a site walk on Wednesday, August 20th at 6:00 PM with a public hearing to follow at 7:00 PM at the Municipal Building. The Select Board will meet on Tuesday, September 2nd at the fire station at 7:00 PM for a special town meeting with a Select Board meeting to follow. The Municipal Building will be closed on Monday, September 1st for Labor Day and the tax collector Town Clerk will be closed on Fridays until September 26th. Sorry for the inconvenience. There will be a public hearing for the November ballot questions on Thursday, September 25th at 6:00 PM at the fire station. As part of the hearing of citizens' policy, no personal attacks on any individual or firm, including town employees, town officials, or members of the public will be tolerated during any meetings. Please direct concerns about individual employees or town officials to the Chairman of the Board of Select Persons outside the public meeting. Please stay current with town information by visiting www.limerickme.org.
Thank you. We will now move on to department reports. First on the list, I have Cindy Smith, Librarian.
Good evening, Cindy Smith. I have a report for the, about the library. So for August, our Artist of the Month is Carlos Rodriguez and his art will be on the walls through August, possibly into September. Our summer reading program has ended and we had about 100 people sign up. We did have some adults and the kids can stop by and pick up their certificates and coupons. The Doughboy Donuts is, has a coupon for each kid. They can either take two donuts for free or one ice cream. We still have the Maine Wildlife Park Pass that you can come and get. That is a discount pass. You would pay $5 per person when you get there. We want to thank the sponsors of our Lego Camp Week that we had. We had donations from Great Falls Construction, Hanaford in Waterboro, JP Carroll Fuels, Partners Bank, Plumbers, Ace Hardware, and Limerick, Precious Finds Maine, Richardson Trucking and Excavation, S.A. McLean, Village Smiles, Western Maine Water, Woodland Valley Disc Golf, Wright Chocolate House, and some individual donations from members of our wonderful community. So we want to thank those people for those donations. This coming Wednesday, spur of the moment, we had a, we have a pop-up event and it's going to be at the playground and it's Debbie Hardy is bringing her pony Lindy to the playground ball field and so you can come bring your kids and see the pony. And that's it for the library. Does anybody have any questions? Can I give...
What time is that event on Wednesday?
10 o'clock. Can I talk about the cemeteries?
Yeah.
So Judson Starr from Maine Memory, Maintain the Memory, from Kenny Bunkport came in, worked on headstones. He came for five different days and he wants to come back. We have enough money to come back for one more day and so we're planning on September 6th. We have received a couple of extra donations towards that project. So he was able to fix eight veterans' headstones and five, five others. And then as well, there were some other headstones that Sarah worked on with Judson and those were broken and you had to, a couple of them, she had to, they were tipped and broken. So she dug them out and used two-part epoxy to put them back together and they had to be clamped for at least 24 hours and then put back in, in the ground in the right place. One of the veterans that he fixed was J.R. White and that is from the White Tibbetts Park. The Tibbetts Park is named after J.R. White and his headstone evidently had been broken and put back in, but it was put in backwards. So all the headstones are facing the road and his was facing the woods. So pulled that up, it was broken, so it's not regulation height because it was one of the original headstones from the VA. And so those are done, eight veterans, like I said. And Esther Hayes, the original person that prompted this fundraising effort. And I appreciate all the, all the support. We also cleaned at least 25 headstones. And so someone in the community reached out and asked, what about her family's headstone up in Highland Cemetery? And that is Harry Brown. He was a World War I veteran. So I went up and looked and sure enough, his is tipped over. And there were two others that I found about ready to fall over, very wobbly and insecure. Thurston Day and Bracket Wigan, those are in the upper right-hand corner. So I'm not sure if you want to wait until next year, try and do something again this year. I know John had talked about putting money in next year's budget.
I think that would probably be best is to budget it out for next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
Now, there was some tree work around that dural post, that dural...
Right.
Are we going to get that done and use the funds that were in there? I mean...
Sure, you know, I guess you guys have to decide how that would be, that dural money would be spent. That's in a trust.
Yep.
So I guess you have to look at the legal aspects of that.
It's going to be a crane job.
That one, Will? Can we get a price to do it by somebody and, if they've left, like I said last week, they've left the money to us to take care of it. And if there's a tree there, let's...
So the dural plot has probably, it has the one big stone in the middle and at one time in the past, they used to use lead to connect the big stone to the bottom stone. And this is probably four feet wide, couple feet high. And that strip of lead is coming off and the stone is starting to slide off the back towards the woods. So that would need to be done and if you're going to use the dural money for the durals, there's some that are a little bit crooked and they need to be cleaned. But he did not get me a proposal on those. I know we talked, I asked him about it because you had mentioned that he should get a proposal together on that, so...
Can you follow up with him on that?
Yeah, he's coming September 6th to finish up the ones. There was Jacob Guptel, his headstone was broken. So he started the repair, but it's something that you had to leave and he'll come back and do that. You may have seen as you drive by, there's a few headstones with plastic bags over the top. That's because the mortar, he sprayed water inside the plastic bag and then put that over the headstone and that allows the mortar to dry in the proper manner. So they have to, the bags have to be on there for three weeks. So also in the Highland Cemetery, there's one tree that's already fallen and it's in the upper right-hand corner on the last two headstones. The headstones were not damaged from what I could see, but you can't walk up to the headstones because the limbs are laying across them. And then of course, there's the ash trees on the front roadway. Good old ash trees. So more to think about. When is the vote on moving the money for cutting of trees?
The 2nd.
The 2nd of September? And that is where, at the...
That's just here and Tibbetts Park.
Okay. And that meeting is here?
Fire Station.
Fire, that's the one at the fire station? Okay. All right. All right, so that's my report. Thank you.
I'll take care of, I'll take care of looking into those trees.
Both sides? Because we have the other CD money that is...
There's some trees that are on the Baptist side. But the big one is the problem and it's, is if that falls, it's going to take out some real, real weak stones.
Stan?
I just wanted to say before Cindy leaves, and I've mentioned this before, we have, or I've been looking into securing federal monies to restore some of the veterans' cemeteries. So if there are veterans in these cemeteries, whether it's Highland or any other cemetery, there are monies available. And, and I apologize, I didn't realize Cindy was so much involved with this. If you allow me to get with her, I can probably try and secure some funds so that the, the taxpayers don't have to pay for some of the maintenance and repairs of the cemeteries. There is a large amount of monies to maintain or what they call perpetual care under the federal government at this point. And I know the state has adopted some of that. So I'd like the opportunity to talk to Cindy and see if we can secure some more monies. It may not be this year, but we can definitely get some for next year. And there are a lot of funds, especially when it comes to maintaining perpetual care.
Do you increase, like, the trees?
Yes. Anything to do with the cemeteries, it will provide monetary support to municipalities and towns. One of the big issues that the federal government and the state has followed, not under the current administration, but the previous one, the veterans became a very priority in perpetual care for cemeteries because it used to be, if you weren't Catholic, you ended up in a non-perpetual care area. So they've eliminated that and between the states and the government, they want all of these cemeteries to be continually maintained, whether it's a private one or a public one. So I'd like an opportunity to talk to Cindy a little bit more about that and see where I can offer some help on what I've done before.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sounds interesting.
Thank you, Sam. Next on the list, I have Lisa LaPage and Anne Marie Carroll from the Town Celebration.
Thank you for having us tonight. I would like to have some thank yous I'd like to talk about and then a few other things afterwards. What a wonderful celebration and a beautiful weather we had for this event last weekend. And I want to have a special thank you go out to my co-chair, Lisa LaPage. Not only her social media, I'm not on any social media platform and Lisa's done it all. Well, she's put it out, got the, the town all buzzing about the activities, everything. There was something new, she would do that. She didn't only do that, she also put out her own personal phone, cellphone number and her email address for people to contact her, whether they wanted to be in the parade or just to reach out. And she, she did that all the time. She also secured many events for the children like Love Your Brain for the helmets and the Bike Coalition and organized a wonderful parade. And I really feel we work very well together. So thank you, Lisa. Also, I have some other thank yous. Trevor McLaughlin, he created the logo of our certificates and they're also the logo on our, on our calendar. He also was our tech guru whenever we had a meeting. We needed to have something come up on the board or connect to a Zoom. He was always there, willing to help. But not only that, his wife Abigail took over 300 pictures of that weekend's events. So that, we're very grateful. Greg Melhorn with the Rec Department said he had monies in the rec account to pay for the porta-potties, the bounce house, the obstacle course, and the dunk tank. Thank you, Greg. A big thank you goes out to someone you probably don't even recognize that helped out tremendously for this. And this man's name is Steve Sawyer. He graciously allowed us to set up the bounce house and the other events on his property next to the old fire station for the children to keep them safe and in one place. Thank you, Steve, because this event wouldn't have happened if you hadn't donated that property for us to use that day. So remember that name, Steve Sawyer. Thank you very much. A thank you also goes out to Charlie Jean Pellegrino for offering their property as well. Thank you to the American Legion, Freedom Lodge, Limerick Snowmobile Club, Troop 329 CIA Auto, Village Smiles for the Bubble Booth, PMP, and DeeDee and Glenn Tibbetts, and Shirley and Kurt Keller, and everyone that participated in the parade. Thank you to David Carpenter, our time capsule facilitator. He was here for the bicentennial and he was here for the semiquantennial. He put it in and he was taking it out. He also created a 46-minute video and with lots of pictures and news. The next person I'd like to thank is Gail Libby for her expertise on producing ads, programs, posters, and working countless hours on preparing the bicentennial video, the thank you business post that my daughter created to put them on the town's website for all to view. Thank you, Gail. Thank you to my daughter Jenny Harriman agreeing to help me create a calendar of Limerick at no charge. Not only did she create the calendar, she generated posts of all the businesses, sponsors, and video of the pictures taken and set to music. This was our only fundraiser. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you to Alicia Buzzell and Dottie Richard for dropping everything to help me with countless tasks at a moment's notice. Thank you both. Everyone on the semiquantennial committee brought something different to the table with great ideas and activities. What's that? Yes, in melon and sun. Thank you Charlie, Nick, Pellegrino, and Rick Richardson on working on opening the time capsule. And yes, the time capsule was opened, which took about eight hours at no expense to the town and a lot of brawn, and then the committing on pulling everything out. Literally pulling everything out by lowering Lisa LaPage's granddaughter down this five-foot tube to retrieve the envelopes being held by her feet and sweatshirt. We have pictures of everything. Then we had the task of going through all the contents of the capsule and Ann Colby categorized all the envelopes and set up a historic time capsule display for all to see. And if you didn't get to see it at some point, it will be displayed at the library. Ann is still has envelopes and she's trying to find some of the owners of them. Thank you, Ann. Oh, Lisa has them now, from what I understand. So I take that back, Lisa has them now, so... Also, thank you to my husband for providing adequate power for all the events at the old fire station. Also, also be in my sounding board for these past six months. He's probably gotten tired of hearing me, but thank you. Thank you to the townspeople on making this event to remember and all the organizations and individuals that contributed their time to make this event a success. Thank you Brady Connors for doing Limerick proud for a wonderful speech. A copy of that speech, which I still need, will be put in the time capsule.
She has it.
I have that too.
You have that? Okay.
Hey, she has it all.
Thank you, Brady, thank you, Lisa. Thank you for all the setup and cleanup people that are on those committees. If you were out there and it needed to be done, everybody pitched in. Hopefully I haven't forgotten anyone. Also, Gail wrote a wonderful thank you ad and put it in the shopping guide last week, last Thursday, if you haven't seen it. Thank you, Gail. I will be selling calendars for $5 at the different events and they're on sale at the library and at Vicki's Old School Gift Shop. And Lisa has some too. So I will be at the ski show, I'll be at some town meetings, I'll be at the Snowflake Trail and the Village Cookies. We'll be selling them then. Just, and, oh, and Halloween, I forgot that. Perfect. And these will make a wonderful Christmas gift and this is the only calendar that Limerick has ever done and it's a nice historic copy to have. So if you have, we have plenty left over, so thank you for your purchase. One thing I do want to talk about, if you want to be a part of the time capsule in 50 years, these envelopes are still available. The instructions are on them and they are due back on September 30th. So on that note, I would like to discuss a couple other things going forward. I've got, these are all my thank yous. Back in December, the Select Board asked the Rec Department, the Fire Department, Historical Society, and the Research Club to come together to create a new committee for our 250th celebration. for our 250th celebration, the semi-quintennial. I belong to the Research Club. And myself and Cindy Mullis were the only two to step forward at that time. But for those of you that don't know, in December, the Research Club, they sell red bows easily down, we sell them to individuals and we're usually down to the Limerick supermarket. We sell them for $5 and usually people put a note in memory of someone. And then all those red bows are tied on the Christmas tree just up in the bandstand. Well, every year, that money goes to a contribution like maybe heat assistance, the food pantry. But this year, we decided to give it to the 250th committee because we had no money. And so that, last December, we collected $750. And so we voted to bump that up to $1,000. So, whoo-hoo, we got $1,000, but not only that, we had a board member step forward, John Medici, who graciously said he would match that donation. So we had $2,000 to try to put this event on. So thank you very much, John. Then at the Select Board meeting, John Medici said that all donations needed to be run through the Rec Department and made out to the Town and Limerick Rec Department donations so that this committee would fall under the umbrella of the Rec Department for insurance purposes. Upon securing gold sponsors for the calendar, I asked the businesses to have their places photo-ready anytime after Memorial Day weekend. We're unable to take pictures because it rained every weekend. And that's something my daughter was doing for us. So we finally took pictures on June 29th, Sunday, because it poured again on that Saturday. And we took over 600 pictures, not only of the gold members in the calendar, but every business that sponsored us. All the sponsors were on board with any leftover monies going to the restoration of the 1928 antique fire truck because they asked what we were going to do with the leftover funds. So please come out and vote on September 2nd on transferring any leftover monies from this event to the restoration of the 1928 antique fire truck. Thank you. Greg Malhorn, who is the Rec Director, approved me to make all the deposits of the sponsors and purchases for this event on his behalf. I went to the treasurer to deposit our first check, and she created account number R250202 for us. At this time, I would like to hand this out and I would like to go over it with you. I watched the Budget Committee meeting the other day, and I have some questions.
I'll let you pick one and pass them down, and we'll discuss this together.
Okay, whoops. Okay. And looking at this chart, you'll see all the deposits, gold sponsors. And you'll see the second page, there was 15 sponsors for $5,400. The second page, and it says silver sponsors, there were 18 deposits for $1,850. The bronze sponsors had seven sponsors for $290. And then the craft table donations were $100. And then I did a deposit slip for Julie on August 11th because we took in $425 for cash for the calendar sales. And the very last page, I will speak about that in one moment. In regards to the gold, silver, I did a separate folder for gold, silver, bronze and the craft fair. And just to point out, every, everyone had one of these forms filled out. This was my receipt that when I went to the people that sponsored us, it listed, I'm going to use the Research Club for an example. The Research Club on May 6th, they had the month of December because they were a gold member, they paid us a check number 1456 for $1,000. They kept the bottom half. On the second page here was handwritten, that's what they wanted in the calendar. So I took a copy of this and made a copy of that front page. I also wrote on the top, "Community Recreation Donation 250th, Account Number R250202", and a copy of their check. I also made a copy of the treasurer, Julie. Then I put that same information on the very next page, listing all the same information. But Julie also initialed it, dated it, and she put the deposit number on there. And then she printed out the final page, if I can get it. She printed out the final page, which is the deposit slip. And I can't get it all. And she also made an extra copy for Alicia to keep a folder for Greg so he could review it at any time. So this is basically what I did for every sponsor who was in the calendar. Any question at this time yet? No. Okay, so then it came time to make our purchases. And our purchases, I went through Alicia. I did say I would fill out purchase orders, but Alicia graciously did it for me, and I truly appreciate that. And on the receipts, you'll see on that last page, there's some highlighted in yellow. And I have every receipt, it's in purchase order. And if anybody on the Budget Committee would like to see any of this, they're more than welcome. I'll come up to one of the meetings and explain everything to them. But I did meet with Julie on the 11th, and our monies, everything matched. We are in budget, so we took in a total of $8,065. We spent, we, yeah, we spent $3,532.46. So right now, we have a balance left of $4,532.54. And I, and then the last time, she also spoke at the Budget Committee meeting about the second event. Well, Lisa and I decided, yes, there's going to be a second event, but not for this committee. We will be selling calendars at the Toucha Truck with Mike Carroll, and there'll be other events going on. And then I, there will also be, we'll be making deposits in our 250202 account right till maybe the week after the village Christmas because we'll be taking in money and any of the expenses that we may have on resealing the time capsule. So we'll have a bill for that, and we'll have more calendar sales coming in. But there'll be no second event for us. So in December, when I make my last deposit for the calendar sales before the 15th of the month, then a new account for my Anna Stan will be created, a G364200 for the restoration of the 1928 antique fire truck if this passes on September 2nd.
That number is different.
It is different. It's not this one?
No.
Okay, so it's going to be a different number from the R250202.
I can tell you what it, nope, so it's G4.
Okay. It's going to be G4.
643-00.
643-00. Okay, thank you, Alicia, for that correction. I wasn't sure because it was being discussed when I watched the budget.
You had the one that we originally started. This is a change, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And that will close out account number R250202. So we will not be making any more deposits, we will not be making any more deductions out of that account. I have met a lot of great townspeople and have had a wonderful time. It was a lot of work, but last Saturday made it all worth it, and it was a day to remember. Not only that, using the new fire station for this event made it all possible. It was a joy to see the community coming together in a building that is not only a fire station, but a community building too. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions regards to the accounts, or I'm going to leave it to Lisa?
Could say ditto.
Oh, no.
I just want to thank everybody from Anne Marie, my second hand. We talk multiple times every day. Wasn't a day very rare to go by that we didn't. But I think we pulled it off. I think we pulled it off well. And the whole community, it came together, it was nice. I was glad when it was over, but it was nice. I want to just stress, our next event is October 18th for the Toucha Truck. And that's the date we're planning on resealing the time capsule.
Before then?
I thought it was the 18th, we're doing it in the afternoon. We have a meeting Wednesday night.
Yeah.
We might change these dates.
So.
So Wednesday night, we have another meeting with the committee, just to revamp, go over stuff. Yeah, so we'll do that. Also, October 31st, keep in your calendar, it's Halloween on Main Street. The historical witches are coming back, so come visit the scary house. Yeah, but I really want to stress thank you to our committee, to our people. I was kind of disappointed when there was questions about the money because I'm telling you, this lady, there should be no question about the money coming in and going out because it's right there, literally in black and white, so.
And red and yellow, it's color coded.
And red and yellow, I mean, it varies. But they're just, that was her job for life, is money.
Yeah.
So not her first rodeo. So it was a little disappointing when we're hearing all the talk behind the scenes. So I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
I think I speak on behalf of the Select Board when we thank you. That was a great event that happened. Perfect. Next on Department Reports, I have Stan Hackett, our Code Enforcement Officer.
Stan Hackett, Code Enforcement. The first thing I have before I forget is, we had a circumstance where we actually sold a, or recovered a tax-acquired property that the church rebought. Saco River Corridor approached the town, the lot next to it, the town owned by quiet title, which in the past, the town had sold them for $200 to the abutters. Saco River Corridor did mention that it was a waterlogged lot. We conferred that with Casey, and I also went out. It is not a buildable lot. But what I wanted to do was approach the board, the abutter that purchased the lot from the church would like to purchase it for $2,000. It is not buildable, it will just be combined as one. So that is what I'm going to ask the board, if the board would like to accept the offer. The individual has already given us the check in case the board said yes. It is map 42, lot 203 and 204. One of them was tax-acquired, the other one was quiet title through the settlement with LAC. And that is one of the original goals that the Lake Arrowhead Committee, which the town formed and joins, one of the members, Martha Hamilton and a few others, that wanted to reduce the impact of a mass development and try to combine some of these lots to reduce that overdevelopment that Waterboro has done, so.
So the lot that the town owns is not buildable by itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Which one does the town, they want to buy?
203.
203? They currently own 204?
Yes. And the church bought 204 back, and he applied to build a single-family dwelling. And Saco River Corridor did approach and say, can we combine the lots?
I make a motion, we sell lot, map 42, lot 204, 203, to...
Be combined with 204?
To be combined with 204 as a single lot, and we're selling it to... JP Construction? JT. I thought it was a church.
Well, the church sold it to JT. So the church bought it back, they owed about 20... $20,000.
One of the original Lake Arrowhead purchasers, they had passed away, but one of their children bought lot 204 back for the back taxes.
Well, the church bought it back. It was, the church, when the person that originally owned it passed away, they deeded it to the church. The church originally was not aware of it until we went through the process of informing former owners that the town acquired the property by taxes. So the church met with us, Dottie and I, and we went through it, and they owed about $20,000. They bought it back, and then they turned around and sold it. I don't know what they sold it for, Dottie may, but I don't. But then, again, Saco River Corridor brought it up to our attention, that 203. What they assumed was, and under the statute, is if there are two non-conforming lots under the same ownership and they're contiguous, the law says they need to be combined to make a more conforming lot. Lake Arrowhead is all conforming lots, they didn't understand that. But under the circumstances, lot 203 under map 42 is a waterlogged, substantially waterlogged lot, and it's not buildable. So an opportunity to get it back on the revenues and not sell it for $200 versus $2,000, I wanted to present it to the board and see what the board would do.
There's no building on the property at all?
They cannot build it and they cannot separate it.
And the lot that we own can't be built on even if we sold it as a single lot?
Correct.
So you made a motion, John, is there a second?
A motion to JT Construction.
Did you put the amount in?
For $2,000.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right.
So I do want to say one other thing, there's been a lot of animosity and some advertisements put in the papers. I encourage people, if they have any questions, to please ask. Not everything you read or hear is always 100%. The town, as you can see through its own celebration, when we work together, we accomplish a lot of things. I encourage that enormously, 100%. Making finger pointing and accusing people or doing other things accomplishes nothing. It degrades people, it makes them feel bad. And the town has, since I've been here, since September 2021, I've seen so much progress. I've also seen a little bit of negativity, and it's all hearsay. So please, if you hear something or read something, ask before you make judgment. These boards, this is not an easy job for any board member, particularly Select Boards, and it's a very thankless job. I did it for over six years in another town. And no matter how much progress you make, it's never going to satisfy 100% of the people, right? So they're doing the best that they can, and every board member and every committee member does do their best. It's, but they're doing it on what they know. So if there is a concern or a question, it's better to ask them to make, rather than make an accusation or to put something publicly out that really deters the whole efforts of what this town has done. The town, and this, I'm going to jump the gun here, the town is in an enormous amount of growth. We're one of the towns that has the most growth right now in the surrounding area. So we approached both boards, the Select Board and the Planner Board, to do a moderate moratorium to reduce the impact of a larger subdivision, which is seven or more. That is coming to vote on September 2nd, and the board will bring that up because they need to readdress it. But the reason for that is, the town is growing so quickly and so fast that we do not have time to plan for what the future repercussions are. 90% of your roads are dirt or gravel, they're very well maintained. The Richardsons have done a wonderful job maintaining those, Lake Arrowhead still maintains theirs. But 90% of those roads are dirt. The larger or even smaller subdivisions increases the... The larger, or even smaller subdivisions increases the traffic on these roads, and the impact endear deterioration, not to mention the weather events that we've had. So, that's one impact. Another impact is, you have a brand-new fire department, which is state-of-the-art and one of the envies in southern Maine, so if anybody wants to demean that fire department, I got to tell you, with all my experience in York County, Limerick has done an amazing job, and you need to be really proud. But another impact with so much growth is your essential services. It does draw on them, so I did ask for the moratorium so that we can plan a little bit, we need to review some things once and for all, from number one to all the way to 100, or A to Z. We need the time to look at it and actually do things instead of band-aiding, with the state statutes changing rapidly. We have two new laws coming up that will start September 1st, then 2026 and 2027. And there's another one that's in the process, is with 1901, and nobody knows what they're going to do, but that one is geared to reduce municipalities' authority. So, again, it's all being contested, we're fighting, it has not passed, but the moratorium will allow the town to voice their opinions and concerns so that all of the boards, including myself as code enforcement, can look at what the larger impact is to the town. Do we need to do an impact fee? Which we may, most of towns are. Standish is quite hefty, so, I mean, they are starting to look at this because the impacts are so enormous that the taxpayers shouldn't be burdened with the enormous growth that our current administration is throwing at municipalities, especially the smaller ones. The other impact is your law enforcement, again, which is your essential services. There will be a point where the towns will have to pay more than, or it will increase your, you pay a tax to your York County, which is part of your sheriff's department enforcement. State police are now doing it, but again, as it grows, you're going to see those future things happen. So, that's why we asked for the moratorium, and I'm sorry I jumped the gun on that, but I thought I would voice that a little bit more for the board when you bring it up. So, and I do really encourage people, it is very discouraging when you hear negativities, especially when it's put in a paper or anything else. We have enough. And right now, there's several of us that were caught in the New Hampshire Freedom Constitutional thing, and that has resurfaced. I find it humorous, but a lot of people do not, and it's very insulting for those people, right? And if you would like to hear some of those, we'll make them available, but they will be taken down, a complaint's been filed, and we will have Maine State Police address it again to remove those. But it's a form of harassment, and nothing was intentional. Some people were called liars, some people trying to defend people that were paying or paying or doing permits were asked to leave so that they weren't filmed during the event, and it just got carried away. So, we're not denying anybody's rights for the First Amendment, it's just we're trying to protect the taxpayers of this town. Beyond that, I want to go with what we have for permits year-to-date, and what we did last month in July, billing and plumbing permits were $16,081.8. Business licenses were $5,000. The plumbing and surcharges that the state gets was $502.50, which comes out of that. So the total fees collected was $20,568.58. Permits issued in July was 14, we had one voided, so that makes 13. Single-family home dwellings to date is 35. Last year we did 43. Year-to-date, January to July 31st, and I wasn't really clear with my assistant when I asked for this information, so if I bounce a little bit, I apologize, it's my fault. But year-to-date, as of July 31st, we did $93,532.95 in building and plumbing permits. Business licenses, we did $14,833.31. And that was increasing our fees to try and discourage people with cannabis to come into the town. So, we are going to readdress this once we move on to readdressing the ordinances. The state plumbing fees and the surcharge came to $3,612.50, that comes out of the $93,000. That brings a total of fees collected with plumbing and business licensing as of July Total permits issued as of July 31st, 109. We had four voids, so total permits come to 105. Single-family homes, dwellings only, is 35. As of August, from August 1st to August 14th, we have done $9,620.20. Again, the plumbing and the state fees is minus $327.50, which brings the total collected to $9,272.70. Permits issued as of August 14th, 119. Single-family, minus the four voids, it brings it to a total of 115 permits, but single-family homes in August brought it to 38. So we're just shy of our 43 mark that we did all of last year. So, that I wanted to bring up to everybody so that they can understand why the boards are trying to take a step backwards, review everything for the best interest of the town, okay? We still have several, actually, we have a few tax-acquired properties left, but we've already proven that we will move them forward, but in the sake of not promoting any more growth at this point, we're holding off on those, plus we needed to get through some things that we weren't aware of, and that is working with the accountant and making sure that we establish correct general ledger numbers when we receive the monies where it gets applied to. So, that's another misconception, when we first did it, everything went into, if it was tax-acquired, it was easily accounted for if it was in Trio. If it's not in Trio, which 140 of those properties, or approximately 140 of those properties, were not in Trio. We owned them since, I think the oldest one goes back to 1934. So, those properties were no longer in Trio, so they went into what they call G186s, not in Trio. So, that money ultimately will all go to the capital reserve account, but we did reserve enough for administrative fees or any other cost, right up until right now, and we still do that, that will help offset some illegal or professional fees. We just need to get with the accountant to make sure those numbers are verified and can be transferred, and that is an option for the board. That's not saying that that's what you do with it, but you should have close to, without looking at my report, just over a half a million dollars for project reserves for the future. So, and again, those are rough numbers, I don't have that in front of me, but if you need to know those, we can provide those after the board reviews them, okay? Are there any other questions?
Do you know how many subdivision lots are on record, or approved, that haven't been built on? Do you know how many?
The one that is the most obvious right now is Proke Lot Subdivision, and that one still has about eight lots that haven't been developed, but is in the process of selling the rest of it, which is 105 acres, which will amount to, I'm sorry, 155 acres, which will amount to 100 additional lots. Right now, he's, like I said, he's got eight to 10 lots that haven't been developed. We got Quarry Road, two permits were pulled recently, so Quarry Road is now all committed. I think that's it for subdivisions, we do have a couple future ones, Laire Drive, on the right-hand side of Laire Drive, going from Dora Lane to the Carroll Materials property. They intend to, and have filed an intent for a subdivision there of six homes. So, and that is another thing that needs to come up. I was asked about this, and my answer was, and I deferred it to the planning board, the planning board has the authority to put some conditions on there, so that Laire Drive or the people living now on Laire Drive shouldn't suffer any more inconveniences than they already have. The town has done everything, Southern Maine Modular has done everything, and there is a question because they need to run water lines and sewer on the straightway from Dora Lane up, not the loop. That will alter or affect the top layer of pavement, and I think the planning board and the developer, we can work out something so that it works out the best, and not inconvenience the people on Laire Drive, and not put the town in a financial question. So, but again, that takes us teamwork, and I know I've heard some rumors, and when I've inquired about the rumors, I have debunked it, so it is only rumor, and I don't like them. I don't like false information, it causes a lot of animosity. So, but right now, with that subdivision coming before the planning board, I think it's more appropriate for the planning board to make the stipulations on the conditions of approval. And John, I don't know if you've got any other ideas, you were one of the ones that somebody said they spoke to, and I have already checked, and no, John did not speak with them, so it's just, I don't want to get the town into a bitter battle over nothing, so...
No, in watching the planning board meeting, they talked about the waters on one side of the road, the sewers on the other, and they want to develop the right side, and the question is, should the water lines be brought across the road now, before the top coat goes down, versus after the fact? Most times when they pave a road, they put a moratorium on digging, and that's pretty standard. So, when it did come up, and I spoke to Stan, and I listened to the planning board meeting, I called Casey because they were possibly going to be paving the road sooner rather than later.
They're getting high now, yeah.
They were ready to go, so she agreed to put a hold on it because I would hate to have that road paved and then just have six stripes in it where they had to dig across. It makes no sense.
I'd be happy to cooperate with them.
So, everybody agreed that there just has to be everybody getting together before a plan comes in place and we get a good road that we deserve, and the people down there get a good road that they deserve.
And once it goes through the planning board, we'll be able to communicate with the residents that are there now. I know Dottie and I spent two weekends visiting those people, and we were able to explain to them what we were trying to do, and with Southern Maine Modular, they came and they finished bailing out, and I'm saying bailing out the town, but it's not necessarily that, but they did do a considerable amount of work to rectify what failed to do through the planning board, which the town has to have some sort of performance bond. It has preferred an irrevocable letter of credit, some people can't do that, but it really is important, and I know the select, the select board is on board with that now, and I know the planning board is. Everybody learns, and we don't want to go there, so that's why I'm saying, let the planning board put the final details to that, and then the system works and nobody gets finger-pointed. The system does work. The problem is we've gotten, including myself in the past, into the habit of old habits. So, we need to allow the law and the ordinances to do what they were designed to do, and then the people that are in charge of running the town or a department will be able to do their jobs without all the confliction. And then you won't get people stepping on other people's jobs either, and that's where we get into a communication downfall. And I know I'm lecturing, and I apologize.
You said this was being sold to JT Construction? The deed says Northeast Homes.
It goes by both, doesn't it? It's Northeast Homes.
It is Northeast.
It is Northeast Homes.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so the motion was to JT Construction. And who did Northeast Homes buy the other lot from? Who was the church?
Carl Gold Camp is the seller on the...
It's what?
Carl Gold Camp is the seller on the, about a lot.
He sold it to, has he already sold it?
The Gold Camps passed away, but in their will, they deeded it to the church in Massachusetts. Do you remember the church's name? I know they came up and visited.
And the church must have given it back.
So the church gave it back to who?
To the family.
No, they sold it. They sold it to Northeast, that's who's bought it, and that's why Saco...
The Gold Camps sold it to Northeast.
And the Gold Camps were...
Like original Lake Arrowhead owners from 19...
Did they own the church?
I have no idea how the church...
They were members of the church, the Gold Camps...
But the Gold Camps, the original owners died.
Yeah.
It's two different properties. The church, the church in Lynn is what owns, I'm pretty sure the other ones are on lot 204, that's the one that, that he's buying.
Has he bought it yet?
He's under contract, subject to a Saco River Corridor approval.
So we can't, I'm going to rescind, we just agreed to sell a lot to, why would you tell us that this guy's an abutter and he doesn't even own the land yet?
He does own the land, he does.
He does own the land?
He does.
And who did he buy it from?
And again, he was refused a Saco River Corridor permit because they feel that it needed to be combined, and it was the Gold Camps that willed it to the church. That is what the deed said, the church had to sell it, and they did. And that's lot 204, that was the Gold Camps. And if you look at my tax-acquired properties, you will see that 204 was the Gold Camps.
So the Gold Camps, the Gold Camps haven't had a transaction in Limerick since 1989?
Correct.
And that was a lien from the state. So, whenever the Gold Camps gave it to the church, I mean, I'm not a, I don't care about that other lot?
Yeah.
Because we got nothing to do with it. I don't see where it's been sold to this guy, and we're now agreeing to sell to an abutter who doesn't apparently own the lot yet.
No, Northeast does own that lot, because otherwise they wouldn't have been able to go to Saco River Corridor to ask for a permit. They have to show title right and interest, just like they do with the town.
When did he buy it?
They're under contract, buy it.
They're under, so Casey says he's under contract, you say he's bought it?
Okay, let's table this, I can prove that wrong, all right? It's been sold, it was sold a few months ago, and then it was resold to Northeast. And they went to Saco River Corridor, and you already know that if they go to Saco River Corridor...
I don't care about Saco River Corridor.
Saco River Corridor takes 30 days...
I'm on, you can look up the Registry of Deeds site, okay? Northeast Home hasn't bought anything from any church. They bought, they've bought a couple of other things, and I don't care where they, I mean, it's, and I don't know if that's the lot, I just don't, we've agreed to sell a lot to an abutter, that we don't even know that he's the abutter. If he hasn't bought it yet, there's somebody else on the other side that might be interested.
Do we, do we have the email, Dottie, that we can bring up, please? For Saco River Corridor and Northeast, he's the one that gave you the check.
Just for the sake of time, I think we ought to table this till next week and get a chain of titles on this.
I have the check in my drawer.
All right.
Hold it.
All right. So, I draw this, we'll have to wait...
We're going to pull this back.
We'll have to wait. There's a lot of misinformation again, and I didn't approach the board with erroneous information, but we will get you the facts. information, but we will get you the facts. So please would draw that, we'll start over. This property was a tax-acquired that the former owner purchased.
This one, so this lot here, I don't disagree with you. That, that shows online that we got this lot from Lake Arrowhead way back in the 80s and that I don't disagree with you.
And that was solved in the settlement?
And that was solved in settlement. So I agree we own this lot. I just don't, can't see where, we've agreed to sell it to an abutter, who's a true abutter?
204 was sold. We already gave them the deed and it was transferred to somebody else. We did sign the deed. You guys signed the deed. So it was sold.
204 was sold or given, they were giving it back because they redeemed it?
Sold back to them.
But we don't even know what the name of that person was.
I think we can just get documents in order for the sake of time and move on.
The church inherited. We can't change the names on the deeds. So we had to issue that municipal release deed under the original name. So, and that's state statute. So once we did that, that is beyond the town's control and they sold it to the person that wants to develop it. So you also know, since we brought up Saco River Corridor, I did file a complaint with the Attorney General's office. I did file a complaint with the federal Attorney General's office. That Saco River Corridor is going beyond and above their authority. They do not have local authority over municipalities. They cannot dictate on any lots being combined. That is solely a state statute and it has to be a non-conforming lots. Everything in Lake Arrowhead is a conforming lot. It was designed and approved that way and unless something else has changed, but nothing has in limit, they are all conforming lots. That is not under their judgment and that's how this.
Not necessarily buildable.
Correct. And it doesn't, it is not their call. Their authority and actually, they don't really have any authority. What their job is to do is to make sure that there is no negative impact within the Saco River Corridor. So our authority is 250 feet, theirs is 500 feet. And I did file a complaint and I asked the governor's office, the attorney general and the federal government to decommission them, put the monies towards the HHS where they need the money or somewhere else. But we already have now, since 1970, we have a very well-developed DEP system. All of the code enforcement officers have to be certified in Shoreland where they shouldn't be doing it, okay? And that's a separate certification. That's not our normal code enforcement. So, and we also have the local authorities in Portland off in Canker Road that is Shoreland Specialist. So I have asked them to decommission them, put the money somewhere else. We don't need them anymore and if they're going to interfere with local authorities, which they have, then it's time to say no. Because again, if this was a buildable lot, it is up to the town whether the town wants to combine it or in some cases, LD 2003 is demanding the extra dwelling. So the towns right now can justify combining the lots to reduce the impact on the environment, but that's not their decision. That's, that's local authority. I did do that.
All right, perfect.
Yeah. So anyway, this gentleman can build on that law. I just wanted to present it to the town to try and reduce one extra issue, which if we go to sell it, every lot, this is another thing I need to explain to everybody, every lot is buildable. You can, if you really want to spend the money, on a subsurface system, because that's what, technically what a buildable lot is, to accommodate whatever subsurface system it is. 140 Parsons Field can take a subsurface system, but it's a very, very expensive pumping system. I know some people that do property management just spent $40,000 on one of those systems. So people do not want to spend that kind of investment on a property that hasn't been developed. But that is, that's the criteria. You also can, if you want to go through DEP, you can fill in certain pots of a wetland. So just about every lot is buildable. That from Saco River Corridor?
That's.
That's from, okay.
That first paragraph.
It just says he's, he's not, he doesn't own it yet. He's under contract and expects to buy it.
So.
So he doesn't own it yet.
He was supposed to close. He was supposed to close last week. He extended because Saco River Corridor would not issue him a permit because they considered the lots in contiguous ownership because the town had the one as tax-acquired and the one as quiet title at the same time. So because they were in contiguous ownership, they refused to issue him a permit. So he extended so that, this could be discussed at today's meeting because if he can't get a Saco River Corridor permit, he won't be able to build.
I'm going to correct something else too, in case he isn't aware of this. Saco River Corridor can't dictate whether or not the town issues a permit. That is the town. They don't have authority to say that it's not a buildable lot and they cannot refuse somebody to build a lot. So.
They've refused me to build lots before.
Well, again, they, they don't have that authority, but that's what they do try to do. They do not have authority over municipalities. So if the lot is buildable, the town or the municipality can issue a permit and Saco River Corridor has no enforcement abilities.
I do think that this is important because there are a number of other lots that are both tax-acquired and quiet title lots in contiguous lines for some of the future ones. So I think it's really problematic for the town legally to sell some of the tax-acquired ones that abut quiet title ones if they're within 500 feet of the water because of the problems with Saco River Corridor. So it might be something worse.
I think it might be problematic for a buyer that doesn't do their homework.
And again.
I know the town, listen, if town puts something for sale and somebody wants to buy it.
That's true.
It's not our fault if they haven't done their homework. I mean, we've all bought stuff that we wish was better.
I've been there.
So.
I will get, I'll get in writing from the Attorney General Office, Saco River Corridor cannot dictate that. The other thing, tax-acquired is separate from the quiet title. The town does not have any choices on tax-acquired. It has to follow the statute. So until it is sold, you don't have, or I say you, the towns or municipalities don't have the authority to combine it with another lot because it has to go to market value. So you're not, it's not comparable. You're doing an injustice to yourself.
Right, but the corridor is trying to say is that it's an illegal subdivision because they were legally combined within the corridor at one time.
And it is a legal subdivision that was formed in the 70s, early 70s, late 60s.
I agree with you.
So, and I know Casey and I have talked about this in some length, but again, and I did verify at the state office, Saco River Corridor has no authority over the town municipalities. But we can get that further. You can even say that contingent on him purchasing it, you may approve the combining of the lots.
I think there are a number of other options I can discuss with some of the people involved to see if we can find an alternate resolution.
What other options are there?
I think that maybe the owner of the Gold Camps, maybe they should be the ones submitting an offer since they are the current abutters. Or maybe there's, you know, there may be other ways to accomplish the same thing.
It's the same idea.
I agree. We're just trying to make it work with the corridor.
I think at this time, we can come up with these agreements and it's, it's 8:15, we're still on department reports.
But again, one of the other problems is we kicked the can down the road. There are many options, but please stop doing Band-Aids. We will get you the right answers and we will do this. But going back to the Gold Camps, which is the church and everything else, is another delay, another long effort, which ultimately cost money.
Correct, but this was brought to us under the intention that we were selling it to an abutter who owned the lot and they don't own the lot.
That was my understanding.
So I think it would be best for the board and the town's sake that we push it next week and come back.
Well, again, that's what we just said, but I don't want to entertain any other ideas because again, we're just kicking that can down the road. It is not a buildable lot. This person does want to do it. The Gold Camps are deceased, so you're not going to talk to them again unless somebody's got miracles.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm done. If anybody's got any other questions? And there are a whole lot more rumors going around too, so I'm sure you guys were aware of that.
I will agree that I am sick of the rumors, but that is a story for another time. Guess I'm kicking that down the road.
Would agree to sell it to him once he.
They, they just said they're postponing it until we get an answer. And I don't want to take up any more of your time. I'm trying to progress this and unfortunately I didn't have some of the details, but my We do have the $2,000 check, which we probably need to return at this point until we get an answer.
Thank you. Next, I invite Casey Gray from RE/MAX Coastal.
Thank you for having me. So we just have two items. The Dog Road property is sold. The contract buyer for the 140 Parsons Field Road has terminated her contract based on her inspection contingency. So the property will be going to the backup offer. So I just have a earnest money release form for the buyer, the board to sign for the first buyer. I'll collect the deposit from the second buyer this week. That is slated to close for September 4th. And so that'll be sent to Title. It may have been sent today, I'm not sure.
Is where it's highlighted? Any questions? Real estate questions?
I'm seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to start out with my report for a, to ask for your consideration of getting us a heat pump for the office down there. This 100-degree weather. The air conditioner goes continually and last weekend it never got below 85 in the office. It just can't handle it with the door opening and shutting all the time. Number one, I don't think that air conditioner is big enough. It would have to be a lot bigger. It would have to be probably a 12,000 BTU instead of an 8,000 in order to be, and if there's any money in the OPRA funds, I think that would be able to.
Sorry. I can tell you that I have on the agenda tonight to discuss heat pumps because now that we did the electrical stuff that we wanted, we know how much came out of that amount that we were doing for energy efficient upgrades. So that can be another building that we talk about. Because we were talking about two others, so you can add that one on too.
Okay, thank you. I sent an email to EcoMaine. Our recycling service agreement is up January 19th, 2001, uh, 2021. And we usually get a contract every five years. I had to notify them by before November 1st or they were going to look at going over the contract and making changes. So I notified them plenty of times so that we will continue with the same, the same conditions that we've operated in the last five years. So they will send us a contract that will be up in 2026.
Any changes in money on that?
No, not as long as they were notified in time. So I think the last time that happened, they did go up on some conditions because, so that's why I got it in plenty of times so they, they know about it. 28.8% of the household waste went to the transfer station last month. That's 38.30 tons of household waste, which happened to be down. It happened to be down seven and a half tons. And I'm racking my brain trying to think of why it's gone down. It's gone down because if we still had the open-top containers, they would have put seven and a half tons of demolition in the household waste rather than have to pay to get rid of the demolition. So that household waste is going to save us. That compactor will save us in another way.
And rain too, right? Rain soaking it up.
Yeah, because my demolition went up. My demolition went up over last year by over four tons. So I'm thinking that that's what's going on and that's a good thing. The compactor's working fine. We get to a point around, when it's registered, 700 to 800, where the container is rolling. It pushes everything this way. When it gets to the end of the container, it rolls and comes back. And a couple of times, we might have to reset it, the timing, but other than that, it's working fine. 9.80 tons went to landfill. Now that's anything that fiberglass, pressure-treated, that all has to go, and insulation, that all has to go to a landfill. So that was almost 10 tons of that. And 23 or 24 tons of burnable demo went to EcoMaine. Rather than go into a landfill, they'll take it and they burn it and that goes for waste to entry.
This is all for one month?
This is one month, yeah. I believe it was, the 28.8% was actually down, I think last month it was 31%. But we have taken in as much as 41% in a month down there. That was Christmas time. My income right now is, including this week, is $44,155.26. And that represents about 60% of the requested $66,000 that we are committed to bring in. I believe we will come in over the $66,000 because we have a huge load of metal to sell. I met with somebody to look over because in my five-year plan, my capital plan, we were planning to pave the upper portion. That's from the, from the household waste compactor out and in front of number two, three and four containers and all the way out to where the road splits. So I've had somebody come and measure it. They're going to give an estimate and I plan to present that as part of the budget for, toward my capital for this coming here. That's it, short and sweet.
Thank you.
Hey, Joanne, do you have an update on your DEP stuff? Sorry if you just talked about it. You are going to, about trees cutting, I think getting a quote, there's some things that we have to do to.
Yes, I'm working with Ricky on that. I think there's only one tree that they're looking at possibly.
I just had it on my notes to update.
Yeah.
To make sure, okay.
And I'm waiting for him to mow the cap, which he hasn't done yet.
Okay. I knew you'd be on it.
He's supposed to do that.
Perfect, thank you, Joanne. DeeDee, do you have, do you want to wait for hearing, or do you want to be added to department reports?
No, I can do it now.
Sure, yeah. Sure, yeah.
August 18th, 2025, to the select board members Wade Andrews and Howard Burnham and Julie Giles, Treasurer, Town of Limerick. This is to notify said parties that a recall petition has been returned to me, DeeDee Tibbetts, Town Clerk for the Town of Limerick, by the 14-day deadline date of Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. This recall is for Treasurer Julie Giles with reasons stated on the petition forms incompetent to perform the necessary duties of the Office of Treasurer. The recall petition needed 153 valid signatures from registered voters in the Town of Limerick after the clerk's certification, and there are 164 valid signatures and eight invalid signatures from three separate sets of recall petition forms. One set of forms from one circulator had been separated from the stapled pack. For this reason, I did email MMA Legal to ask if I was allowed to accept these forms or if the circulator would have to go back out with new petition forms and get signatures once again. I question this because petition forms are not supposed to be tampered or altered in any way. The circulator whose name and address is on the petition forms are the one who is to reach out for the signatures on that set of papers. When they are separated, it could mean that these papers were left unattended and/or another circulated could be getting signatures on that circulator's behalf, and that is not acceptable. MMA Legal would not answer my question because of the attempted recall on Giles a few months ago. They did recommend that I contact the town attorney. At that point, I did contact the town attorney and asked the same question and a few other questions. The answer to the question that was asked to MMA Legal was, as long as I receive the cover page, voter's signatures, and circulator's signature, I should treat them as complete and validate signatures. However, if I have any indications that the circulation was done improperly or that there was any sort of fraud, that would of course change her opinion. I am not aware myself, I am not aware of these papers being circulated by another person or left unattended, so I certified the papers as I am required to. My next question to the town attorney was a question that I had asked a few months ago to our former town attorney and did not receive an answer then, but it still applied to the same attempted recall. Our recall ordinance is very vague. It is silent on a lot of issues that the state statute covers. As we found out on the last attempted recall for Giles, there is a 14-day return deadline for a recall petition on state statute Title 30A MRSA, subtitle 2505 in paragraph four, and the deadline was not met. When the town ordinance is silenced, it falls back onto the state statute. So we had to abide by that 14-day deadline. Our recall ordinance is also silent when it comes to the reason to recall on an elected official. My question was, do we fall back onto state statute Title 30A MRSA, subtitle 2505, paragraph nine, limitation to recall. An elected official may be the subject of a recall petition under this section only if the official is convicted of a crime, the conduct of which occurred during the official's term of office, and the victim of which is the municipality. The town attorney informed me that the ordinance does not require any reason to recall. The statute is, it references, similarly, don't require any reason to recall. There is another statute, 30AMRS, subsection 2505, that provides the recall, for recall only in the event of criminal activity arising from that position, but the statute isn't referenced in the ordinance. So the reason cited in the petition is sufficient and in fact, the petition needn't, hadn't cited any reason at all. With that answer, as much as I do not agree with it, I'm giving two of the three select board members notice of this recall against Ms. Giles. Three of the five members of select board has an interest in this matter, so I am asking select board members Howard Burnham and Wade Andrews to order an election within 10 days from today. The election must be by written ballot, not less than 30 nor more than 60 days thereafter, provided that a regular municipal election will not be held within 90 days of receipt of this certified petition. The November election is in that 90-day timeframe, so a special town meeting does not need to be held if you do not wish to do so. In between the time of ordering this recall and the 21st day before the election, Julie Giles may request a public hearing and the select board shall promptly schedule such a hearing to occur not fewer than seven days before the election and shall provide adequate posting at least seven days before said hearing. Thank you for your time, DeeDee Tibbetts, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, not Tax Collector, Town Clerk, Town of Limerick.
Did you ask the town attorney if the three of us had to be recused from this?
You all have interest and in our ordinance, if you guys have read it, it does state, "Within 10 days of receipt of petition, the town clerk shall certify the signatures contained on the petition and shall determine if petition meets all qualifications except for in section three of the ordinance. Should the petition be found insufficient, the petition will be filed at the clerk's office and the voter who filled the petition will be notified." And, hold on, because it's in here. If the petition is certified by the town clerk to be sufficient, he or she will submit the same with his or her certification to the Board of Selectmen at their regular next meeting and shall notify the official or officials whose removal is being sought as such action. In the event the Town of Selectmen fail-- no, that's not it. It's in here, hold on--
I've seen it, I'm looking for it too and I can't find it.
Subject matter, yeah.
Where is it?
I want to say it's in that same, I thought it was in that same line as the town clerk shall present to the selectmen who do not have subject matter.
So it's way up top in section three. It says, "The petition shall be addressed to those members of the Board of Selectmen having no interest in the subject matter of the petition."
And three of you took out the petition, so--
But we took, we're not, the subject matter of the petition is the removal of the treasurer. So we're not, that's in there, that would be--
If there is a recall pulled on me.
If there was a recall on one of the select people.
The subject matter is Julie Giles.
Correct. It's not John Medici, it's not Bernie, and it's not Wade, and it's, or it's not Brady.
Three of you took out the petitions on Julie Giles, you have interest in the matter.
But we are not the subject matter of the petition. The subject matter is the recall of the treasurer.
That you guys took out the petition forms for.
Well, the second issue is if the three of us are out, two people don't have the right to vote and create a quorum.
So that would fall back on me.
Not necessarily, why?
That's what it says. If you guys can't make the decision, it'll fall back on the town clerk. So what do you want to do?
Because under the--
You're the brainstorm who coaxed all this up, so you tell me what you want to do.
What do I want to do? I want to make a motion to hold the election for recall on September 19th. It's within 30, it's, it's more than 30 and less than 60 days.
Who is that in November and you'll have in September?
Doing it in November, it's going to give her more of a fair shot than having the 164 people that you guys got to sign that petition.
I'll second that motion.
As a taxpayer, if we are scheduled to have a scheduled meeting in November, why are we spending the money to have a special town meeting for something that's already scheduled for November? That's costing us taxpayers money for one person.
And you don't have any proof that it's her anyway. The auditor, that hasn't come back yet, they're still working on it. There's no proof that it was her fault and that was there.
Well, that's all for the public hearing, that's not to discuss tonight.
I'm just saying--
That's not to discuss tonight.
You're sitting here making all your own rules, so--
What rules am I making? What rules are I making?
Right there, right there, you make your rules all the time.
Well, you made the rules, did you get to make them?
I am reading the ordinance.
And it says, and read it.
Correct.
And again, do it in November.
Having no interest in the subject matter.
Let's all just listen to John Medici like we always do.
Okay, you know what? You're more of the problem around here than anybody.
Absolutely.
There you go.
If you have a problem with the way that I'm doing my job, take out recall papers on me.
What? Take them on me, try it again.
There's a motion in the second.
I didn't say I was going to take them on you. I said if you have a problem with me doing my job, take them out on me.
And if I did, I would.
Because obviously, anybody can take out recall papers on anything.
I do not want to see this town fighting like this. I am just asking for an honest vote and if that would be November, that would be November and it's not costing the taxpayers anything. And from what I'm hearing from the auditors right now, every information I have given to them is right. And if you look at the paperwork that you all have given, excuse me, two weren't given, back when it said the books were a mess in the 21-year. And if you look at your management letter for your 23 audit and you look at your bill for your auditors, you've got a $6,500 bill that was paid to do a transition, which was never done. I received no training, I had no audit done at that time, but you paid $6,500 to the auditor for a transition period. Sorry if I'm raising my voice, but I want to make sure I'm heard. I apologize for that, I'm not being upset, it's just a matter of, I know what the rules are too. And I am asking, give me a fair shake to see what your audit does. Don't go cramming it down my throat like you have everything that you've done to me since I've been here. And the people have said, reached out, and you've seen it in the news and you've heard it yourself on your Facebook. I do not hate partaking of your Facebook because I don't think an elected official should be on the Facebook page. Other towns prohibit it. You're fired if you get on the Facebook if you're an elected official.
No, again, like I said, you put in the things for recall, whatever, it happens, it happens. But this woman here, or anybody else, should have right to have time, to have people, the majority of the voters, which will be out in November, will be voting. Again, you have the old September thing, you're only going to get maybe 200 people out here talks. So I feel, to be fair, during November, what's the big rush? Maybe then you'll get your audit finally finished, you'll know how much money you got, what might have happened. I just don't see what the big deal is, why you just can't, why you want to push it to September instead of November.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
I just have a question for you, Julie. You keep on saying you have had no training, but I thought you were an experienced accountant from Watergate. You said you had 40 years.
All right, I missed, yeah, this isn't, these would be questions that are going to be asked at the public hearing. We have not set one yet, we have, she has not called one, we have not set the election yet, so no.
One thing that I've been watching for, since I've been working with Julie on the books, there is nothing that has come through in writing that says anything about incompetence. Not one word.
Are we going to hold the public hearing tonight?
If I had seen that, I would be joining them.
You're, okay, do you want, we can hold the public hearing tonight and go, I mean, it's not fair to Julie to do that, but--
You don't want to see it off.
Yeah, we should, shouldn't even, well, you stood up and spoke your piece.
No, but I don't like to see the town fighting. That's all I'm at.
And it should have, it should have ended with that. Instead, you went on to plead your case.
No, I'm not pleading--
No, I'm, I'm saying, let's move on.
I would have you, as a person in town, if you would just do what in November was wrong with the state. And it goes how it goes. And again, that way you can have a public hearing with voice.
I'll speak for myself if, and respond to you, okay? I would be disingenuous if I pushed this off to November. If I didn't feel, in taking these papers out, this was of the utmost importance, the difference between September 19th and November whatever could wreak havoc, in my mind. So I'm, so if, so I took out the recall, I took out some of the recall papers. If I say now, listen, it's not that bad, let's push it off to November, I had no right to take out the recall papers. So my motion stands, I would like to do the, the recall on the 19th. It, it goes to a vote, maybe you can convince everybody else.
As a guy who shouldn't be voting on it.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor? Opposed?
Go ahead, gentleman back here asking for a board. Sorry.
Ma'am.
Don't worry, I'll be home.
I just have a question about your rules, whether it's in the ordinance or the MMA's manual, and conflict of interest before it ends up being another legal bill for the town. If there's no problem, then, then you're in the right, but I, so many other things that I've seen in town have had a whole lot less involvement by the individual or, or their hierarchy in the cosanguinity, cosanguinity or something of that sort.
So in section three, under the recall ordinance--
But, but I'm asking, this is not--
No, I know, I'm--
But is that the recall ordinance is different than what necessarily your rules are?
Well, the recall ordinance for the town states that if petitions for the recall of all selectmen are submitted, then the petition shall be addressed to the town clerk. So there wasn't petition recalls for all of the selectmen, therefore, with two of the selectmen, there's no quorum, which returns to the need of necessity to invite everybody back in to make a quorum in order to--
So when John doesn't vote for something because it's a family member and he feels it's a conflict of interest, or you, when it's a fire department, I don't understand that conflict of interest and the potential that you took out, the three of you took out this paperwork and how that's not a similar conflict of interest. I'm, I'm just saying--
If, in any vote--
I'm just questioning, I don't know.
Let's say there was four of us here tonight and Bernie and I have a distant relationship through marriage, let's say we both decide we're going to recuse ourselves and that left two people. And that left two people. Under Robert's Rules of Order, it's called the Rule of Necessity.
Correct. But you didn't call the Rule of Necessity, so that's what I'm saying.
But what's that?
You didn't call the Rule of Necessity.
Yes, we did, we talked about it with--
You talked about it, but you didn't say the Rule of Necessity.
That's exactly the words I used.
Oh man, then I apologize, I didn't hear.
Yeah, under the Rule of Necessity, we would all come back in. So in this case, that's where I believe it fell.
Okay, we are moving on to old business. We have heating, we have two received heating fuel bids. I'll give Wade one, I'll open one.
Can you take the floor one here first, please?
The first bid is from CN Brown Company. They would like to offer the following-- The first bid is from CN Brown Company. They would like to offer the following price for October 1st of 2025 to September 30th of 2026. Number two heating fuel, seven thousand one hundred and forty gallons. The fixed price would be two dollars and eighty-two cents per gallon. K1, they put five hundred and fifty-five gallons. The fixed price would be three point four dollars per gallon. Additional charge for GA, for after-hours, GA deliveries would be a hundred and fifty dollars per delivery. An additional charge for priming systems for GA deliveries would be seventy-five dollars per prime. So that was from CN Brown, I think. And then from JP Carroll, the fixed price for number two heating fuel per gallon is three point one nine, nine. Fixed price for K1 fuel per gallon for automatic delivery and GA deliveries is three point eight nine. For propane, it's one point nine. No charge. Additional charge for called-in GA deliveries per delivery is no charge during business hours. For after-hours GA deliveries, it's a hundred dollars per charge. No charge for priming of the systems, and heating equipment service charge per hour is ninety-five dollars an hour. With that information, just because JP Carroll offers propane and equipment service, I would make a recommendation that we go with JP Carroll Fuel for the October 1st, 2025 to September 30th heating season. There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I'm seeing none. All in favor? Opposed and abstaining. So does that, I don't know, there's two in favor, one opposed, and two abstained. All right.
What was the CN Brown propane?
They didn't have any propane.
They don't have propane.
No propane, Carol's.
Carol's propane was one point nine nine. So does that, I don't know, but with there still being a quorum, does that, does that pass because two voted in favor, one voted against, and two abstained?
I believe so.
I would, I would think so as well, but I can look into that, and if we need to, we can address it next week. Next on the agenda is review of legal accounts. There is no warrants this week, so I cannot review that. Then we have review of policies. Harassment policy. Is there any changes that the board would like to see? We were to take these home last week, take this home last week and review it. I did not see any changes that I needed to. All right. And then we have the personnel policy that we need to re-sign.
You're good with this? You're good?
Yep.
So we'll bring back next week for new signatures?
Yeah. The personnel policy needs to be re-signed. It's been updated with the date amendment.
So it just, on the amendment, I didn't put the date in of when the last amendment was done, so to make it, like, so everybody will get that copy with the date of the amendment. It's just needed to re-signature. But you already voted on the changes.
Perfect. Municipal parking lot paving, we need to sign the contract with Sebago Techniques. Is there any update on that? I know we have, I have an updated contract in front of me. I don't know if Bernie can speak on that?
Yeah, I can. We selected Sebago Techniques to do the bid, and then we asked them to not, to give us a concept design plus a cost estimate. The cost estimate boosted up the design by seventeen hundred dollars, but it was further on in the contract to, that money was further on in the contract. It's not gonna cost us any more money. They're actually, what, thirty thousand dollars cheaper? Pretty close on the other one. It's just moved from the back of the contract up to the front, that additional task that we asked them to do. So they'll give us a concept and a budgetary figure to hopefully put before the voters.
All right. Is there a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve.
And have me sign it. Is there a second? Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? And I am opposed of it, but I will sign it because I have to. Municipal, no, we just did that. John, anything on the overlook?
Nothing new this week.
Okay. Howard, is there anything on the purchase order policy?
Yeah, we had a meeting last week, last Thursday upstairs in the library conference room. We had two department heads show up. Cindy from the library and Joanne from the transfer station. Nobody else showed. We get some, some ideas. One main, the one main change was, and I had mentioned this, we haven't, just haven't put it in the writing, was all bills, well, let me back up. There was a little bit of a problem going around with people saying, well, some department heads saying, well, we want all the, we're not gonna have the bills coming to us anymore. You know, they wanted to have them go to their own individual departments, or the problem with that is, some bills were going to departments, but they weren't making it to the treasurer's office. And I'll give you a classic example of it. We have got, if I can find the damn thing. Yeah. It was last week Julie got a call from DSI Door Services about a balance that was due. Well, they sent us the bills. One was dated November 5th, 2004 for three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And the other one was dated February 28th, 2025 for sixty-eight hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents. Now, those were billed to the fire department, were delivered to the fire department. Julie did not have any record of these ever making it down. I know because I double-checked it. This is the problem we're running up against. If all the bills, if people make out the proper POs, and it states right on the top that the bills go directly to the treasurer. If there's a PO number involved in that, that can be linked right to that department. And the procedure that I developed, it's a no-brainer. If they send in the POs, she'll put them in a file situation over here, and when the bills come in, she can put them right in those slots, and there's no question. She can look at it and say, is the amount that we approved or was approved on that PO, is that in actuality what the bill is? Without that system, we're gonna run into this again. Now, I don't know how they operate with the bills and stuff up to the fire department. All I know is what comes in down here. And the system has to work. So in the event we get down to budget time, as we're gonna be very shortly, we can look and say, do we have any open POs that we haven't, that we haven't paid or we don't know about? There is no system in place. And my, the last discussion I had with our auditor, I explained that I was trying to get this in place. The only thing she said to me was, "Thank God." So I didn't even say any more.
Those two, one of them, you said 2004. I think you meant, I think you meant 2024. November, November 2024.
Why are you just giving a bill for 2004?
No, no.
Precisely.
No, no.
No, no, you said 2004.
You said 2004. You meant 2024.
2024, yeah.
So my question is...
Sorry.
So November 2024, that company presumably sent a bill to the fire station, they claim.
Yeah.
December, January, February, March, April, May, June, July, August. They never sent another one in nine months?
This is all we have. That was sent by them, and they called up one, know where the money was.
When they were, did somebody talk to them? Did you talk to them or Julie talk to them?
Julie was gone. I was really...
You were there?
Yep.
Did she ask them why they would send another bill in nine months?
I don't remember that.
That would be my first question, is, you have a nine-month-old bill, you had a company saying you owe me a bill from nine months ago.
But you would think that another bill would have come out, but when we got these things sent up there...
My question, exactly.
Why is this happening?
Did you ask the fire chief if he had those bills?
I talked to Vinnie this morning.
Did he have them?
He didn't have an answer for me. He had to go back up and look.
He usually keeps pretty meticulous records when it comes to finances. I find it, I find it hard-pressed that he would sit on a bill.
That second bill that you got, that got knocked down the road, does that carry a balance from the first invoice, or is that a separate bill altogether?
It's separate.
So if we were to owe that money, we would have had a balance coming forward. They would have sent some kind of statement saying, we have this invoice, this is the invoice, and we owe a balance of this, but you got a separate, two separate invoices, no statement? I don't know.
Nothing's come in?
Selectmen Burnham just mentioned that there's no process in, no system in place. Last year, we put a system in place. It was vetted by the Budget Committee, and it was vetted by the Select Board. It was vetted by the Treasurer. And we said, there's only one thing that will not make this happen, and that's behavior, changing behavior. I applaud you, Howard, for putting fifteen pages into one, okay, but there's a couple of holes in your, your one page. Okay, but I'm sure we can work that out. So I'm pleased...
You know, I never gave you a copy.
Things get around. Why wouldn't an author, one of the authors of this, be at least given a consideration of a piece of paper and invited to a meeting? You didn't do that, and you knew that four of us...
Don't accuse me of things.
Somebody, you didn't invite me.
We didn't have anything in place, any system.
What is this? What is this? What is this, what is this system? What is it?
It's a purchase order policy.
It's a, it's a, that's a procurement, and this is, that is not a policy. That is a procedure that you wrote, okay?
That's right. It is a procedure.
A procedure. This is a fifteen-page procedure for a purchasing manual system, okay? And it, it covers a lot of the points that are in here, and I applaud that. That's wonderful. I think we're on the same page, Howard. I really do. But your, your one page has a few accounting principle holes in it.
Reason I put it in one page so people can have it, and they don't have to run around and try to find a book.
Well, we, it's on the internet, okay? It's on the internet, and we asked this board a number of times to call a meeting, just like we did when we introduced the budget system that currently is being used, that maybe you can put that down into one page. But this was approved by a number of people, and we don't understand why it wasn't trained. We don't understand that, okay? But it's being used. It's being used, and we hope that there's been some good things come from it. We hope that it stops some of the era, okay? And I think we're on the same page, but please don't say that there's not a system in place. It's just not being enforced. There's a system in place, and your, your one-page document is, follows this quite nicely, except you should expand it a little bit. Maybe fourteen more pages. Thank you.
Dean.
So this policy has been in effect since when?
January 1st, 2025.
Okay. So I think it's fair to say that for the past several months, there's been errors made by people that haven't been brought up like this is being brought up tonight. I think people are human and they make mistakes. Yes, sixty-eight hundred dollars due is sixty-eight hundred dollars due. But there could have been a flaw in receiving the billing at the fire department and getting that sent over here for payment. So I think the system might not be perfect, might need to do some, some, some tweak into it, but I think we should, we should think that our different department heads are, they're not perfect, but neither are we, and let's, let's give them a chance to, to get it right. Thank you.
I just gotta say, after working with Vinnie for a year and a half in that fire station and how the bills were managed during construction, I can't believe that he misplaced these bills. I'd rather think he didn't get them.
Well, I don't know, Brian.
Well...
Well, even if he did misplace, he may have misplaced it, it may have, who knows? But a couple of things, as Dean just said, that happens. People make, everybody makes mistakes. It's one bill or two bills from one company out of hundreds that he gets, and maybe they slip through the cracks. I've got no idea. But that company, I can't imagine there's any business owner out here that if somebody owes you money and you bill them in November, you don't wait till August to call and say, hey, chance I can get that thousand bucks from back in November? You know, you would send something else along the way, so that would lead me to believe either they didn't, or maybe Vinnie doesn't like the bills from DSI and loses them all. I don't know. They should, they should have come, they should have come forth and made at least a phone call or sent out a statement.
Well, November's bill, February's bill should have had the November balance on it too. That's what I think is confusing, why they're two separate...
Now...
Like you don't have a balance forward on them.
I guess, to confuse it, these were probably insurance claims. At least the one of them, the bigger one was. So...
That was, that was paid by insurance.
But who did the insurance company pay?
No, we, we pay it, would get reimbursed for the insurance.
Vinnie said it was all taken, the first time was all taken care of.
So this isn't, this, this damage is not? Because there's only been two incidents on doors.
He said he couldn't see putting it in for insurance.
The six thousand dollar bill? The smaller one, we may have agreed with that, but the bigger one...
Okay, so the first one from 11/5/2024 was once when the door was driven through, from what I can read. Got the door closed, spring unwound, arm disconnected after being hit. This one was work that we had done, such as the light curtain as well, like the added sensors.
That was additional work.
This is what we added, yes.
So the first thing wouldn't happen again?
Correct.
Okay. So the first one should have been paid if we, I guess we could find out if we got a check from the insurance company.
Well, the insurance company would have covered what, both of those incidents?
Well, no, it would have covered the first one.
Would have covered the first one.
It wouldn't have covered, but the upgrade, it wouldn't have covered the upgrades that we did, but the first one definitely went through insurance. The question is, did we get a check from them?
The first door hit, or that, like, did we put both door hits through insurance?
How much were the bills? How much were they?
There was one for sixty-eight hundred, which had the light curtain one, and then...
Then two hundred, three hundred and forty-three dollars. That's got the door closed, spring unwound, arm disconnected.
After being hit.
After being hit. After being hit.
And these invoices are like six, seven months apart?
Correct.
It really surprises me that this vendor did not, every month send out an invoice or make a phone call. Or why would they even want to do business with us again if we hadn't paid that bill six, seven months prior?
And you said no one came to that meeting. Was the meeting advertised? That policy meeting?
Yeah. No, everybody sent an email.
Okay, I didn't get an email.
Maybe the emails is the reason we looked at. Because the Budget Committee, nobody gets emails. They're all getting personal, using personal addresses. And we're paying $8 a month for that for each person.
I believe you did get an email.
I check my email daily. I don't remember seeing it, but I could be wrong. I am human after all. So...
We have a section in the approved warrant that we could take money from to pay this because I can't see anything in the budget for it. It was...
Have we talked to the department head about these bills?
Yeah, I talked to him this morning.
Where they should be paid from?
I talked to him this morning about it.
Did he say where they should be paid from though?
He didn't, there wasn't any, an account in there for it.
That's building maintenance and repair.
Yeah, well... I haven't found that, John. But we do have, I don't know how this is going to line up with everything else we got to do. But we do have $15,000 approved for unassigned account for contingencies.
We've used $2,500 of that.
I'm just saying the system has to work. And when you, when you see POs that sent in with the bill that are dated the day they send them to, down to the Treasurer and it was for a bill that was, something that was audited three or four months prior, that's when the PO should have been made out.
Are you sure some of that stuff wasn't a split shipment? Some of that, some of that material came in.
If you're buying something for $7,000 and you don't have a PO made out, what are you going to do? You make it out when you, after you get the product? I don't think so. And it's happened multiple times. This is why I'm bringing it up.
Do we want to deal with these two bills? Is this, is this something we need to deal with tonight?
We have to pay them.
Is it getting them paid? So, the fire department, Operations Fire Department under subsection 15 before, just...
I'd like to chat with Vinny because just going through my emails, we, we did a couple of insurance claims for, and I'm thinking we could have gotten the money and then we didn't pay the, so if I can chat with him on Wednesday, I'd like to...
Either way, we got to pay the bills.
I agree, which is fine, but I'm, just going through my email, I have several, several emails that are DSI doors.
I just don't think we should touch his budget without talking to him.
And that's fine, but we do have building repairs and maintenance. We do have an account for that under the fire department. Operations Fire Department, Repairs and Maintenance, Section 91 Building, Section 00 Building Repair. So, we do have it. There's not a lot of money in there, but there is an account to pay it off of.
The question is, is it going to be overdrawn?
Well...
With purchase orders, I use purchase orders at Main Medical Center. And when I made a purchase order out, it was to get approval to order an item.
Right.
Weren't we doing this to get better on coding? Because if that's the case, if I want to order something, if I want to go to Ace Hardware and pick up two screws for a project I did at the fire department, I bring a purchase order. At Main Health, I would go to my director. My director would sign off on the purchase order. And then, so every purchase order should come through us prior to being bought, I don't... Or is it a coding issue and that's what the purchase orders are for? That's what I think.
It's a workflow issue. A lot of companies have requisitions that have to be signed off on, but you could use the purchase order that would have to be signed off on, but that would mean who... You, you folks have always authorized the department head to buy without your authority because you authorized it through their budget. That's been the way it's been.
Yep.
If you want to change that...
Oh, no, no, I do not want to change that. Let me make that clear. I just want to understand what the purchase order is for.
So what Alicia does is issue a book of 50 purchase orders. 50? Alicia, is that right? And they can make those out and send a copy at that point to the office here without authority because you all have granted them that authority.
Prior to purchasing.
We, we might have to say that in the procedure...
So it sounds like there's still stuff to be worked out on the purchase order.
That we enforce after we, and train people on it. That would be a good idea. Give them the opportunity to see it because you learn...
How are you going to train them when they don't come to the meeting?
They do come. We, we had a Budget Committee change.
They didn't come last week.
They all came.
Not the line that didn't.
Two, I'm sorry. Offer cookies and coffee, I don't know. I'm sure, I'm sure they'll come, okay? Because I've seen it happen in this very room. They were all here when we changed the budgeting process. All right? And they'll come again. I'm not concerned about that. I'm sorry they didn't come to your meeting. Maybe it just wasn't well advertised. Plus cookies and coffee help. Candy helps.
You can't advertise any more than direct an email to a person.
But they have to get it and your email system isn't working either.
Yeah, I would like to see that email. I have, I didn't get that email. So...
I didn't see an email on it, but my emails, I get them every day. My email system seems to be working perfect.
I sure get the emails. So, there's still work to be done on this purchase policy. Maybe it's another meeting, maybe it's an advertised meeting, maybe it's a carrier pigeon to the department heads with the meeting. I don't know. I...
Let's, let's schedule the training session.
Sure, let's do it. We want to do it tonight?
Look at the fifth, not to, oh, schedule, I don't care.
Me too. Okay. There is no other CDBG paperwork that was given to us tonight and we had the public hearing before the meeting, so... Special Town Meeting, we need to review the draft and re-vote and sign on it. That is for September 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Article 1 is to choose a moderator by written ballot to preside at said meeting. Article 2, shall the town vote to transfer $12,500 from the Brick Town Hall Building and Grounds Maintenance Account? It gives the account number to the Municipal Building Grounds and Maintenance Account. Gives that account number for removal of dangerous trees at the municipal building. Budget Committee recommends yes. Select Board recommends yes. Article 3, shall the town vote to transfer the remaining balance of the Special Revenue Account, R25-202, for the town's semi-quintcentennial celebration and establish account, Special Reserve Account, Special Reserve, Special Revenue Account for the restoration of the antique fire truck. The remaining balance will not be transferred until 12:30, 2025. Budget Committee recommends yes. The Select Board recommends yes. Article 4, shall the town vote to enact, or shall the town enact a subdivision moratorium ordinance to be known as the Moratorium Ordinance? A copy or, a copy of the Moratorium Ordinance is available to the town clerk. I make a motion that we need to re-vote on our recommendations.
Yep, at the budget...
Or was it just one that we had to...
At the budget meeting, question number three was reworded.
Okay. With, with the worded changes on article number three, I make a recommend, I make a motion that the Select Board recommends a yes vote, as written.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. So we will sign that after the meeting.
Sign all seven after the meeting.
All seven. I love warrants, so I don't even have to sign that one.
Not as much as me.
Then there is the November ballot items. And public hearing has been, has been set for Thursday?
25th.
Thursday the 25th at 6:00 PM.
Fire station.
Disbursement ordinance. Is there any changes? I know that these changes are the, there is one change.
It was in B.
Yep.
We just went from one Select Board member for signing the dispersment warrant to two.
Correct. You left the word "one", but changed the number to two.
Yeah, see, good eye. Okay?
I do review stuff.
Oh, my God. Wrong person.
TV filming ordinance. Alicia, I'm going to tag you in on this one.
Well, so I, you have one and then I gave you a new...
This is the new one. I'm passing down my new one.
Under exceptions, there are some changes from the first one, so...
So, exceptions. Meetings at the Limerick Public Library Board of Trustees are exempt from the live streaming and cable casting requirements set forth in this amendment. That is how it's already written. And then, non-meetings. No official business should be discussed, number one, by chance. Number two, by social encounter. Number three, by collective bargaining. Non-public sessions. And four, executive sessions. One MRSA 405S.
Any of those executive sessions are non-public.
Okay.
And if there are any other, I know you guys have had this to look at.
I think that is fine. That will help alleviate some issues that we have been running into recently. Do we have to vote on that as a board?
I think you can vote on this as a whole at the end.
Okay. To accept the warrant, okay.
Yeah.
Earn Paid Leave Ordinance. I didn't see any changes that need to be changed in that. That is just to roll over the unexpended balance of the earned paid leave into its own account. So each year, we do not have to raise and appropriate that money. Transfer of Funds for the Auditor. Is there any update on that one?
I don't think we, I think we're all set with that.
We can take it off?
Yeah.
John, why are we paying ahead for that auditor?
So we're not, we... The bill that came in last week for $13,500 is basically for next year's services. So, the auditor is, wants to be under contract with the towns that he's going to stay with and wants that, to know that in advance so he can move forward with the towns he's... The $13,500 would be, although we would pay it now, it's a... Help me somebody with the accounting, the future, it's, it's going for a few, it's going to be paid now, but it's in next year's budget. An advance...
Is it accrued?
An accrued, yes, thank you. It's an accrued expense. So we pay it now, but we accrue it to pay next year with next year's budget because that's what it's for.
I can see signing a contract for their services or paying them way ahead. Like it's basically it's a deposit.
Yes.
I would say let them do, keep doing what they've been doing already. And they bill us when the services are performed.
And that's fine, if that's the way we want to go. They did say today, without signing that and making that payment, that we should look for somebody else for 2025.
Maybe we ought to.
Yep.
I mean, how long have we waited for that audit to get here? Way too long.
Well, even today, they're still asking for information. They're still looking for information today they can't get.
There are six emails sent between noon and the meeting.
There was, I mean, there are things, I mean... We could talk about it all night long, but if we're going to do, it's not... There are things that are going on that are preventing them from finishing their audit. Okay? I'll give you a small example. I got a call today from the auditor and said, "We're trying to work out your two loans from the water project and the fire department project." Every time you put in a dispersment request on the loan, they deducted $712.50 from everyone. So if we ask for $100,000, we got $99,000, whatever, minus $712.50. We've asked and asked, what is that for? And nobody can give us an answer. So, who was around for the fire department? Quite a few of us.
Vinny's been handling that.
He wasn't dealing, he didn't take, he didn't deal with the bank dispersments. Okay? Everybody's been around for the fire department. What's this $712.50 for?
First I've heard of it.
Clearly, it was the inspection fees for the bank. When they come out and they disperse money, they send somebody out, they make sure the work is done, and they do a title upgrade to make sure nobody put a lien on the building. And every payment cut, deducted $712.50. It's not accounted for anywhere. No, nowhere in our accounting system, anywhere, are all these $712.50 payments. Nowhere. So how can they finish an audit when they keep, every time they turn around and they ask for 10 things, they get eight, and once they get those eight, they find five more they need? We had set aside $100,000 for debt service for the fire department and the water project. I won't get into why we spent $15,000 extra in interest. That'll come up on another day. But we spent $15,000 extra in interest. Sometimes that payment was made and it was taken out of the debt service. Sometimes it was taken out of the project account. So, they're asking me, how, why did they pick? How come this payment was taken out of debt service and this payment? I don't know, I don't know. So they, they need to meld all those together and figure out what we paid in interest last year so they can finish it. So... The reason the audit's taking so long is they're, they're only as good as the information we give them. And if we can't give them good information, we can't get a good audit.
Well, I'll give you a good example, John. Here, a couple of weeks ago, Vinny come down. I don't mean, I'm not trying to beat on Vinny.
Yeah.
He come down and there was some accounts who were questioning him. And he says, well, because he was, he was overdrawn. And he says, well, I've got a grant for that. I said, well, how much? We don't know anything about it down here.
There's 15 emails from Vinny to our Treasurer on that grant.
Yeah.
At least.
I was a part, yeah.
There's at least 15 emails where Vinny said, I've got two grants and this is what we're paying out of it. And the balance left will come out of my equipment account. There's at least 15 of them. So, so they were there. And the Treasurer says, I don't know what the, I don't know what the grant is all about.
Did you get those, Alicia?
I'm definitely a part of the grant stuff. Yep.
Send them to me.
I have the POs.
Can we make it a point at some point this week to reach out to the town IT person and see if there's an issue with our email server? Because I really think all town emails need to go through town emails, not personal emails. I, I don't know who we need to reach out to or...
We've taken off all of the...
That's Budget Committee, that's Select Board members, that's fire chiefs, that's everything.
One of the basic problems is that where, if you work in business, you're given a business phone or a business device.
Yep.
Okay? And your email goes over that business device, which is maintained by an IT person for that, that entity. Okay? Limerick doesn't have that. The five of you have a, well, four of you have a town phone. And Modem Waves has said that he only works on Limerick devices.[1752.62]
Okay.
So, so you're, you have a Limerick device.
I do, I don't know if it's an Outlook thing, though, 'cause I have my town phone on my personal, I have my town email on my personal phone.
That's the problem, okay?
It works.
It, it worked for me, okay? But different phones have, they're different phones with different operating systems, with different levels of operating system.
Okay.
And that means that the person using that device is responsible, not Modem Waves. He's your IT person in this respect. He does not, and he will not teach all of you.
Okay, then, maybe it's we get, we get a town, I, I believe that the budget, maybe we get phones for the Budget Committee then, because I think all town business needs to go through a town email, whether you can access that on your personal phone, whether you can access that on a town phone, it needs to go through a town email, because it--
Right.
Opens up liability, opens up bigger issues.
And FOIA issues, okay?
Yes, and so I, I've, I've said it to the, the board members, it, it needs to be a priority to get town emails set up and working, because I get emails from the state from, on my town email, and not my personal email, it's not Alicia's responsibility to forward every email to us, if we don't have her town email set up.
And that's what she's doing.
That is what she's doing.
She's doing it for the Budget Committee, she's, you know, the girl, you're wearing her out, okay? Because either you buy the devices, or you stop mailing in the United States Post Office, you know, maybe they'll get it there, I hope.
Hold your breath on that one.
So, getting back to the transfer of money--
We lost some bills on that.
Transfer of money for the auditor. The account of the auditor's in also has our legal account. Knock on wood, thank God, we've only spent eight thousand out of forty dollars, out of forty thousand, which means we've averaged about a thousand dollars a month for the year. Some of that was attributed to the TAN, which we know we're not gonna do again, so we should be able to get by the rest of the year, if we keep going with a thousand dollars, with four or five thousand bucks. We have twenty-eight thousand in there, so if we, if we don't overexpend the auditor line by more than twenty thousand, we can offset it with the legal account. The second choice, the second issue is, some of the bills were paid in January and February of this year, which were for services for last year. So, those need to be weeded out and attributed to last year's numbers. Once we do that, that helps this year's budget. And even if that all happened to fall apart, a good portion of the auditor's money is for the single-source audit for the Hollenville, and the single-source audit for the fire department. We can take from those, both of those accounts, still have money in them, and they, so, we should be able to fund the auditor without going after more money from the taxpayers. So, I think we're safe on not having a vote for that. So, I think with that, with all that being said, I guess we're talking about the auditor now. I talked to the auditor for an hour today, and the very good news then, as we want to discuss a little bit later, is although our books are a mess, the town is financially healthy. We have all the money we're supposed to have, we've been diligent in our budgeting and how it's spent, our department heads don't overspend, so we are significantly healthier now than we were a year ago, and that's based on as far as they've gotten in the audit. They know there is still more things to do, but they believe what is left in the audit to do will only help that financial strength and not hurt it. So, for all the troubles we have, we are financially solid, according to them.
Why is Julia--
Because--
Isn't she working--
We're not, we're not gonna, we, it's not the time to get into--
We can do this at the public hearing, we're not gonna discuss, she's not even here to defend herself.
No, I am.
The next article is Article Number Seven, which would be Article Six, if we don't do the auditor money transfer. Reads, "Shall the town vote to transfer an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand from the rescue billing account to purchase a new ambulance for the Limerick Fire EMS Department? The new ambulance will replace ambulance two, a 2016 Ford Lifeline vehicle. The current balance is eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, the projected annual revenue is two hundred thousand. No recommendations from the Select Board or the Budget Committee yet." Article Eight, "Shall the town vote to transfer an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand from rescue billing account to purchase a manual CPR, a mechanical CPR device? The CPR device will allow both ambulances to be equipped with this device. Current balance is eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, the projected annual revenue is two hundred thousand." Article Nine, "Shall the town vote to transfer thirty thousand from the Capital Project Reserve Account G3524-00 to the Capital Project Reserve Account G3-642-00 for SCBA devices for the Limerick Fire EMS Department? Current SCBA account balance is twenty-three thousand, projected replacement cost is ninety thousand. No recommendations from the Budget or the Select Board." Article Ten, "Shall the town assume responsibility for winter maintenance on Nason Road to provide access to MAP 13 Lot 2A upon confirmation that a certificate of occupancy has been issued and the road has been improved in accordance with all town requirements and specifications."
Do we really need to add that? It's already a town road, like you are just extending it a couple hundred feet for winter maintenance. It's not, it's not a road that we're asking to become part of winter maintenance, it's not. Like, we added Win Griffith last year, just an extension, we didn't take to town vote. We did Dog Road, but Dog Road is not a town road. I feel like we're putting this on and we don't have to, I could be completely wrong. We added Alair Drive, like, I don't, we've added other roads when there's been--
This one has been, at that point, is actually--
We can, yeah.
Been voted on to be closed to winter maintenance. Alair Drive has never voted to be closed to winter maintenance.
Winter, what about Win Griffith, when we added last year?
I can't answer for that one, but I do know that this one, because it was voted on to be closed to winter maintenance--
Okay.
It has to be voted upon to open it to winter maintenance.
So, it's clo, it's on the closed winter maintenance list now?
From that point forward, yes. From the last house, it's there now.
Okay. Wade, you're, I don't think Brady went over the dog ordinance one, that one, I know for you, probably makes most sense. I did send it to Kristen and asked any opinions on it, but anything that you see in that that works, doesn't work, or any changes? I mean, everybody, but I just know that this is Wade's forte.
We have a, an impound fee that should be, that was voted in--
Okay.
And it's not--
It's not on here?
No, it's not on the one that's even on, online. I don't know where. Go back and look and see if I still have that from years and years ago, but--
I can check, so it was an impound fee?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you remember how much?
I believe it was twenty or twenty-five dollars.
Okay. I can check.
So, that would be if you pick up a dog--
It would make the transferring--
Yeah, you get to Alfred, and then people call you and say, then, instead of, you can turn around and just have them--
Okay.
Make a check out or to the town.
Okay. So, my, my goal, I mean, you certainly can vote on the recommendations. My one question that I do have, I'm trying to work with the Budget Committee in having a meeting next week, there are two days, the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, that there's a possibility that three of them maybe can meet. If they cannot, can we go ahead and put NA in their recommendations? I don't know what the legal, like, if we just can't meet, this is due to the town clerk on nine-two, we will, after the special town meeting, that will be the night I will have you sign your copies, but if the Budget Committee can't get a quorum for it, I don't know what that will mean.
I gotta, I gotta go back to this leave accrual thing. We're talking about sick leave in here, and I thought we did away with that.
Is it still in there?
Yep, it is.
That's gonna, that personnel policy's gonna be the death of me. What page?
It's under B, accrual of earned paid leave. It says, "Use of earned paid leave accruals we charge against sick leave accruals for full-time employees." We don't have--
I thought we went through every--
I thought we did that out.
I will look at it. Okay, thank you.
And then, in C, it talks about having a, a medical slip. The town may request a medical note or other documentation if leave is more than three consecutive days.
What I would love is for you to take that home and, and sit with Ann Marie at the dinner table at Candlelight and read it word for word.
I thought we took--
I know, I mean, that's what I need you to do, though, take that copy and make the changes. 'Cause I already thought we took them all out, so--
I thought we did, too, that's why I just--
No, thank you.
We keep pushing, all of us keep pushing the table closer.
So, does anybody know what that means for Budget Committee?
I'm not sure, I, I don't know if we can put NA on--
I know, I, or can you leave, I, I mean, and it's, and no fault to them, I get it, it's, and like I said, we're, we're, two of them have come back and said, the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, one was, I think, on, on call for work, so it wasn't like a definite, and then I'm gonna reach out to the new member to see if one of those works for them, but I just, we, they have to meet next week, so I just, if it doesn't happen, that's, I'm just not sure what the, what we can do. I don't know if that's a town attorney question.
I think it'd be a town attorney question, she answers quickly, I think that would be, I, unless anybody on the board knows what the stipulation is, I don't.
It's difficult, because it's money, but it's not money, you know what I mean? It's one of those things, and I, I mean--
So, I'm happy to reach out, I mean, I'm happy to try to make it happen with them. I think they would like the board to come, I will certainly, if we get a concrete, but is it okay to reach out to them and--
Maybe, reach out to them, explain what we're doing--
Yeah.
And have them individually get back to you and ask them if they think it's something that should be coming before them, or they believe it's not. And let's see what they say.
Can I touch on the Nason Road real quick? Getting back to that. I spoke with Stan about that, and Ricky Richardson, Row Commissioner, he said that the improvements to that road are gonna be funded by the house going beyond where the winter maintenance has been closed, and they're gonna pay for the improvements to the road, I believe.
Correct.
So, but I believe the town still has to vote on opening that short section up, it's only like two-hundred-and-fifty feet down in there.
We still have to vote to open that section.
Yeah, it's creeping, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's creeping all the way through, so, it's not that far through there to get to the other side now, but I just wanted to share that with you.
Do you have anything, do you have anything in writing that he's gonna pay for that road?
They're not, they know they're not getting a certificate of occupancy until the road is improved, it's part of his permit.
It says, I did, that is in the question.
He knows he's--
He knows he's paying.
Joanne.
Can't you just take that part of the road off of the, that's gonna be begun every ten years, that's coming up, it's supposed to be up in August.
The close for winter maintenance list?
Close for winter maintenance, it's supposed to be revoked every ten years, and that's up this year.
I think that's why it came up, that, do we have, I think we have to add that to this vote.
You've gotta do that, so just leave that out of the north of the road, off of--
So, I think we have to, we have to add that, I think we should get rid of one, add the other.
You gotta get together with--
We already have the updated list, Rick, you provided us good turnaround, so it just needs to be voted in. Did we, we voted that in, right? Or does it have to be a town vote?
For what?
The close for winter maintenance?
No, the town votes to close roads to winter maintenance, so we don't do that.
Okay.
The Select Board doesn't close them to winter maintenance, do we? I thought the town had to do that, to vote them, to open them and close them.
You started, you signed the law.
But isn't it after a town vote to open it or close it?
You, you have to notify people, if they have a problem with it being closed for another ten years, then you have to address it. The general public doesn't vote.
I was gonna say, I thought we already, we already voted on that, so--
They did in the past, Joanne, opening and closing roads, the towns always voted on them.
Select and House always sign it.
Maybe they sign it after they get approved by the voters.
Yeah, 'cause we tried to get, we had tried to do it at Door Lane, at--
Alair.
Alair Drive. We went to a couple of votes of the town to get that to be opened to winter maintenance, out to the people, and it failed. We couldn't just do it on our own. I don't think it hurts to leave it in here, 'cause it does speak about, there's no question about, if the person comes back and asks, "Hey," it says near they don't get a certificate of occupancy till the road's improved, so I would say leave it in, it can't hurt.
Sorry, Alicia.
No, I, no, I'm totally fine with leaving it in. So, are we adding something else then about the winter maintenance list? Another question, or no?
Yeah, it expires, it expires--
Sheriff on the same page.
So, I think we have the updated list, we got a couple week, meetings ago. Do you have a copy of that? If not, I'm sure Stan or Ricky does. But we have a, the updated list with new turnarounds, remember, 'cause--
Victor's driveway.
Victor's driveway, exactly, okay.
Victor's driveway.
So, yeah, so we, I think we can add that to the, to the warrant. Article eleven, "Shall the town vote by secret ballot on all warrant articles and elected officials for the March 2026 annual election?" Can, do we wanna add and go, and other election, like, secret ballot going forward for annual town elections, or? We were, we talked about this last year, and we decided not to put that on the warrant, because we were waiting for the Charter Commission to see if that were voted in or not. The Charter Commission stated that it would be secret ballot votes going forward. Over the last couple of years, we have seen a better turnout in secret ballot votes rather than the open town meetings. I think it's more beneficial. So, I don't know if we wanna reword that to do, shall the town, shall the town vote by secret ballot on all warrant articles and elected officials for the March 2026 annual election?
You can say March annual elections until--
You know, others in the future.
Until--
Until voted to be repealed or--
Or appealed by, yeah.
Repealed by vote.
There's a word that we are wording.
There's wording, whether, it, it's, so it doesn't sunset.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, for all March, do you wanna say elected officials for all March annual elections?
Yeah.
Until, I'll find that wording.
All warrant, all warrant article items and elected officials.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does the Select Board have any recommendations on the three for the fire department?
I make a motion, we, well, do you wanna do, I make, are we done? I make a motion, we, I'm okay with the fire department, but we're not done with the whole thing, so we can't vote at all at once, right? 'Cause we're waiting to get some information back on one of them, right?
Yeah, I, I was just thinking that we could have our recommendation--
You can at least do your recommendations--
For the Budget Committee.
For these three money articles.
In the event the Budget Committee meets.
And then you'll have to re-vote on them on September 2nd.
I make a motion, we give a recommendation of a yes vote on the three money articles for the fire station.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? And I'm abstaining, as they will benefit my job. Bernie, is there any update on the fire, or on the fire station drain?
We're still waiting to hear from Great Falls, and I know they've balked a little bit, we have to get back to them and see what happens.
Okay. Minuteman proposal. Didn't we--
Just put that off till next week, 'cause it's kind of lined in with the cameras, we're still--
I love it.
Was that on there twice?
No.
Or has it already been two weeks?
Probably already, probably been on there twice, it's already been two weeks, three weeks, it's the one that never goes away.
The Dupree Hardware estimate.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the locks from Dupree Hardware.
That included a lot of the keys for all of us, right?
Yes, and more.
I didn't see that, how that, the way that was written.
Ten master keys, that we'll open every one of them.
Yeah, ten keys per lock and ten master keys, a hundred and ten keys total. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, but are we all gonna get a, one master key's gonna unlock all, every lock, correct?
All of those, yes.
One grand master key?
Correct.
Okay.
That's those ten.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, perfect. I'll sign this and accept it.
Sign what contract?
The Dupree-- Next, we have sign updated sidewalk contract.
You're the only one that has that, Brady.
Sounds good to me.
Hopefully it stays--
We need--
It does have the, the full bid and a little initial to initial what we've changed, and then the part to sign where the price has changed.
Okay, and I was not here last week, we voted to approve that.
Yes, I think we believe we added six hundred and thirty-six feet extra, total of four thousand four hundred and-- Yes, I think we added 636 feet extra, total of $4,410 per storm and $551 per storm for standing or salt.
And we'll hope it won't change, 'cause you have to hand shovel around the mailbox.
That one mailbox that's directly in the middle.
It sounded like that's gonna change.
I think it's gonna change.
It does have pretty little white walk, white rocks around it at least.
I think that would eat a snow blower real good.
Screw up.
Yeah, I would like to know, yeah.
And we could add something into our sidewalk contract where he's not responsible for taking out mailboxes, like we do in our snowbowl.
That wasn't the contractor that did that.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Sabebo Techniques is the contractor who did that sidewalk, so.
They did, they did the sidewalk.
I wanna make sure, and they allowed a mailbox? What's our parking lot gonna look like? Gonna get mailboxes?
That mailbox is in the plan and says remove and reset.
It's the contractor's contract, is that what you said?
Yeah, I don't think it's.
I just.
No, no thought really went into that.
Well, they didn't follow the plan anyway. The original plan calls for concrete slip curb.
It just makes me worry on what will happen with our parking lot if they didn't follow the plan, put a mailbox in the middle of the sidewalk.
So we're pulling.
They'll follow the plan here.
We're trying to pull some old meeting footage. Wade, you may remember, I, when they came to us, I was pretty sure that they agreed to do granite curbing. And not as fault of cement, 'cause they stood right here and we talked about it. 'Cause we talked about it, they wanted us to pay for it. We disagreed, we didn't wanna pay for it. It was a lot of money. But my understanding was, we sat here and said.
I'm pretty sure that it was granite.
It had to be granite curbing, so.
The plan said granite, remember?
No, the plan, the plan, Stan blew the copy of the plan up. It says concrete slip curb.
Okay, that's what it says.
And asphalt.
Still not the plan.
And the, if you look at the picture in the plan, it brings the sidewalk another 40 or 50 feet to the property line of the bank. It dead ends in the grass, it doesn't go anywhere. But the sidewalk was supposed to go all the way to the property line, because when they subdivided that lot, so.
When do you think that was discussed? 'Cause I'm happy to look.
Do we have to accept that?
Uh, well, we certainly have to look, get some.
'Cause I'll tell you, just a minute, the snowplow goes down through there and they get a little too far. We're gonna have a bunch of curbing right up on the walls.
Yeah, like curbing right up.
Yeah, that's why we're looking at the.
I would just like to know who's responsible.
We're trying to find the meeting back, notes back.
But if you sign, or you agreed to something, if it's on the plan, that's what's gonna be made.
Well, we never signed off on a plan, and the plan says concrete, not asphalt. So Stan is getting together with the owner of the Dunkin' Donuts and the contractor, and I believe Sabebo Techniques.
All right.
First, I never say anything so stupid in my life.
Hey, real quick, getting back to this employee handbook. I lined out the two sentences that had to go away. Can Alicia correct that and we go in and sign it at her own thing? You guys all agree?
You and Mary Ann don't wanna sit at Candlelight and do it?
Huh?
You and Mary Ann don't wanna sit at Candlelight and look over it?
I don't have a Mary Ann, I got an Anne Marie.
Oh, Marie, well. I almost caused a fight there, sorry.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, main model franchise update?
So in that email, it highly recommends a board member to be a part of the committee. So I just, I know I wasn't here at the last meeting to get my two cents worth. I was giving it, but nobody could hear me.
On the main mo, I wasn't, I don't know what that.
Yeah, um, yeah, you probably, well, you, yeah. So I can't, actually, I don't think I re, I re copied the email. Bernie, will you pass that to Brady? Bernie, will you pass that to Brady?
What is the main model?
So on that second page.
That's what I'm looking at. What is this for? As you may know, our current, the current cable franchise as far as six towns will expire in December of 2028. The renewal negotiation period begins this December. Your town will be receiving a notice from Charter Spectrum. Okay, our video service provider to that effect in the coming months. Please let your town attorney know about the beginning of this process as they may need, be needed from time to time to guide and finalize renewal process.
So that's the other thing. I don't know if you want me to do that part, reach, like, send it to them. I mean, I'm sure they've probably dealt with it before. And I'm happy to put it out. If you just want to try to get regular volunteers, if you have somebody in mind, happy to reach out to ask them. Or if somebody on the board, I just, like I said, where I wasn't here, wanted to clarify.
I think we can go out for volunteers. Unless any of the board members want, unless anyone in this room wants to be a volunteer. Seeing none, we can add it to the announcements and.
Do I, do you want me to send it to the town attorney? Is it something that needs to go or no?
I wouldn't yet.
No.
Wait till, this is off almost all of the year, right? When is it?
The contract hasn't expired till December 2028, but the renewal process begins this year.
I would, I'm sure that many of these other towns will send it out to their attorney and the same attorney's gonna look at it over five times and bill five different towns. So I would, it's a group agreement. So if it's gonna go to the attorney, we either send it as a group and everybody pays their little bit of a share, or I don't think we should send it alone because we'll all be sending the attorney the exact same thing until quadruple up on us.
Okay. Next, on old business, I have sign updated building emergency policy. This was updated last week, we just need new signatures on this, so. This was to add the electrician? Okay. That is all I have for old business, new business. We have approving, approval of the mill rate. There are two options.
Brady, I think Brady's the only one that has the copies from the assessor.
John, would you be able to talk on, I just, I don't.
So.
I need to understand, we should sit together soon?
So we, every time we are, every year we have set the mill rate, so we know what charge for taxes. This takes into consideration what we pay for the county tax, what our municipal appropriation is, the educational appropriation. Those numbers are basically fixed, right? We have to pay the county what they ask for. We have to pay the school what they ask for. The municipal appropriation is what the people voted for in March and any subsequent changes. We do factor in what they call an overlay, that is to pay abatements if a tax bill needs to be adjusted. That gives us what we call a total assessment. So you take the total assessment, that's all the dollars we need to run the town from the school down to the paperclips. We then now take in deductions. So we get municipal revenue, municipal revenue sharing. That number is usually a best guess, but we've kept it at where the state said they were gonna be. They've, the number they gave us at the beginning of the year for this year has stayed steady, so we assume it will stay the same. There's a homestead exemption reimbursement for the people that claim the homestead. There's a business equipment tax exemption reimbursement that comes from the state. And then the big one is other revenue. So the other revenue is fees that we take in, like Joanne's $60,000, excise taxes. All those are added up. So the assessor gets all those numbers and says, this is how much we need. This is our total assessment, how many dollars of value we have. And to get there, what do we need to set for a mill rate? The mill rate is currently $9.50. We asked the assessor to be as tight as possible and give us some options, so we're close. So we have two options. One is to set the mill rate at $9.95. So that will be a 45 cent increase.
Per thousand?
Per thousand, so I figured out if an average house was, if you're valued at $375,000, when the assessments went up, I figured that's pretty close to average. That would mean about a hun, just under a $170 increase on $375,000. We can cut that increase to zero and keep the mill rate the exact same. If we transfer 200 and, 300, hold on, I'll get it for you in a second. It's around $326,000 from our unassigned account. And that unassigned money is money that we've put aside over years. I asked the auditor for that number today, and we've been asking for it for months. It is hovering right at about $2.7 million. So that's money that we have that's not attributed or obligated to be spent anywhere. To meet our obligation, we need to keep 2.1 million aside. That's roughly three months' worth of expenses that we need to keep aside and don't touch in case of a catastrophe. So we have almost $700,000 in the unassigned account that we can either leave and continue to grow that savings. Remember when we, when we, we took $800,000 for the fire station as it grew and it helped us there? Or we can use it to offset taxes this year and say, look, this is a year that we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep the rate the same, assuming your assessment doesn't change, your tax bill shouldn't change. So, um, you know, I mean, 168 bucks is something, I guess, a couple dinners to people if their tax bill can, can stay down a little bit.
First of all, the old way.
Yeah, and it is their money, it is, it's your money, the taxpayer's money. It's not gonna put us in a financial strain to do it. The expectation, the hope is that one of the last things the auditor's trying to finalize is some of these lot sales that Stan has talked about. And although some of that money has to go into capital reserve by ordinance, some of it is gonna, is coming in, a lot of the money's like the ones we talked about that paid years ago in taxes, that money does not go into the capital reserve account. So that just, so we've had an uptick in taxes paid because of collecting all the older money. So they're hoping that number will move a little bit. It's actually, when I said earlier, that we're a little stronger than we were before. Last year at this time, that was around 2.2 million. So we're $500,000 to the better with, in reason, to where we were last year. So I would make a motion that we keep the tax rate, the mill rate, at $9.50 for the January 1, 2025 to the 12/31, 2025 year.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we'll sign that.
So we need to sign.
Well, we sign the one that you're voting on, that you voted on. Don't sign the other one.
Yeah.
$9.50.
Mine have notes on it, so you have one that's.
I have.
Do you have the one that was $9.50?
Yeah.
Yes.
The one you're ripping up?
Yeah, that's the one, the correct one. I won't rip it up. Then we have discussion of heat pumps.
So after we had our electrical work done, we said then we, possibility of having heat pumps quoted out for some of our town buildings. We have in special reserve account, we had $25,267 for energy efficient upgrades at Town Home Properties. We only spent $2,732.26 for lighting in Code Office that happened here. The third floor at Bricktown Hall and the Boy Scout Hall got new lighting. So right now we have a balance of 22,534.74 in that account. We talked about doing heat pumps at Boy Scout Building in this room, and now we could add the transfer station building to that, if you want.
And just to get quotes for that?
Yeah, that's.
I think that's, yeah. We could get quotes from a couple of different companies, that'd be great.
Are those the three buildings we wanna go with, only what?
Yeah, I think so. I, would it just be the media room in here?
That's what we talked about. I'm happy to do whatever. That's what we, that's what we had talked about before, was, was starting with this room.
I don't know how the other offices are.
I mean, certainly, we can quote more, take away, I'm happy to do whatever you'd like.
I think this is a good starting point. I just, yeah, I don't know. I don't know how the library is with the heat. I just don't want there to be backlash for us, keeping us cool on Monday nights. This room really doesn't, and this room's used as for a cooling center as well, but.
Well, that's the other.
I'll tell you right now, most of the units are not gonna be cheap based on the volume we gotta deal with here.
I think it would still be good to get quotes. That's why I was asking if it was just this room or the whole building. But they're not cheap, but they're worth it.
It'll give us some idea.
So Boy Scout Hall, media room, and.
Transfer station.
Transfer station.
Perfect. With that, I have nothing else on.
Joanne, what do you have for heat down there, right?
With that, I open it to hearing of citizens. Merrill, I saw you first.
Merrill, I'm just interested in finding out what you thought about the permit by rule issue that we discussed at the last meeting for tire storage facility increase at CIA Secocas.
I did not have a chance, I wasn't at the last meeting. I did review the meeting while I was doing some work at my house, but I did not have a chance to sit down and actually listen to what you had to say. So I do not have an answer for you.
I think it, it really is a question for the planning board to answer, 'cause they issued.
And that may be what you're discussing.
They issued the conditional use permit. So if they believe that tire change is a material change and they want him to come back, I think that would be not for us to tell them, but for them to decide whether that's the route they wanna go.
And then you still have to do the permit. Well, if it's a permit change and you, it come back to you.
It would come back, we would handle our piece afterward.
Okay. I got, I got a question. Is there any way we could schedule a visit to go up there? I haven't been up to that place for 25 years.
I think if the planning board has to make a decision, they would do a site walk. But I don't think we can until we get our ordinance change. I mean, unless we open the meeting here, then go. But I don't know if we have, I'm sure we can. I don't know what the issue is.
It'd be nice to see what we're looking at and what you're gonna vote on, you know, fan us, everybody.
When you're taking, you have how many, what's the license amount right now, Merrill?
It's currently licensed for 1,000 tires. The permit by rule has increased the storage to 10,000 square feet, up to 10 feet high. So really, that's 100,000 square feet, cubic feet, I'm sorry. Which comes out to about 10,000 to 12,000 by a conservative estimate.
So it's going from a certain number of tires to a certain size of area now?
Certain size area, which, again, by conservative numbers, is 10,000 to 12,000 tires.
Okay, perfect. Okay, not perfect, but thank you. Ricky, I saw you next. Please. Victor's driveway.
This is for Howard. I got your, I got your email. And I wanted to come to the meeting.
Okay.
But due to that lovely shower we had Thursday, we were doing road repairs, so I got your email.
I see where you made the road repairs.
Thank you.
And that.
My email works.
That was only a minute.
Do you have it on a town phone?
No.
Okay, perfect.
Do you get it on your phone or computer? Just had it get right on your phone.
Your phone, all right.
Congratulations, you gotta teach everybody else.
Lisa.
I forgot to mention, Thursday, Limerick Historical Society is presenting.
I forgot to mention Thursday, Limerick Historical Society is presenting Limerick in the Civil War up at the Bricktown Hall, 7:00 PM with light refreshments being served. We had a lot of our own people from Limerick involved in the Civil War. So Wendy's doing the presentation.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, one other item?
Yep.
I've been talking to, um, Craig Mulholland, uh, at the Rect Department, and they had some plans, they were doing the, the playground that got done and that is, gets used daily, and they're hoping to put up a pavilion down there with just a covered area for people to sit in the shade so they could watch their kids and do some other things. And they've been having trouble getting pricing on that and getting that done. So, um, we talked about putting on the pad that is in place, that's been there for decades and is.
Skate park.
Was supposed to be a skate park, it's never really worked out as that. It's been a.
Ice rink.
Ice skating rink, it's not really ever worked out for that. It is actually in very good shape. It was put in in sections, so it hasn't heaved, it's still nice and flat. So the idea is to put two pickleball, pickleball courts on that slab. That was the thought. We can get, based on the measurement of the slab, we can get two pickleball courts and still have 25 feet left if they ever find, in next year's budget or whatever, to do the pavilion, and it could be on the pad. Some estimates we've got in so far would put both courts at a total cost of just over $18,000, the majority of it being fencing. And the fencing would be mounted right to, it would be, they'll bore the concrete instead of going on the outside so people don't twist ankles coming off the edge and things like that. So the fence was the biggest piece at $11,500. To coat the surface with the court coating, that would be $3,500 just for the material, and we would get donation, we could put that down ourselves, we're not going to need that to be put down. We'd need two nets, two net systems with tensioners, those would be $1,600, and then we'd need to get the court striped, both of them, and that would be $1,500. So a total of $18,100. In their budget, they have money left in both the repair, the equipment, and the supply line to cover it. They have, um, $26,000 in there now. They have no major plans to do anything big for the rest of the year. They also have $4,400 in a donation account. So they have about $30,000, and this would take about 18 of that. Anybody goes down through Waterboro, down Alfred, Old Alfred Road, there are always people on that pickleball court, constant. They tried to do it last year on a temporary basis, there was no lines, there was no fence. If you ever played pickleball, if there's no fence, you're doing more running to go fetch, play in fetch than, than pickleball, so. Where this is kind of a change in what his budget was, he wanted to bring it forward and see how we felt about it.
I think the event on August 9th, 9th shows that there is a large community in this town. I think that that would better the community. Like you said, I mean, you even passed the, I think there's some in, I don't know what town it is, either Shapley or Acton, but they're, they're always being used.
They're everywhere.
They're everywhere, they're always being used. Limerick really doesn't have much, um, like park, in Parks and Rec, and I think I would, I would be in favor of doing it.
I think it's, it's, it's something small, but it's giving something back, you know, to the community of people to use.
Yeah.
The only thing we have to go to bid for would be the fence.
Yeah.
Because that is clearly over 10,000, it's $11,000. But the surface coating we can buy on Amazon, the cranks and the nets we can buy on Amazon, we can put all those in ourselves with volunteers. So it would be just a matter of going up and bidding for the fence.
Yep.
You have a question, not being the devil's advocate here, but where we put that pad in for, intended for the kids to do ice skating, and that didn't work. Do we know what the need is here? Are we going to be spending $18,000 and we build it and nobody came?
I did see a post on Facebook from the Parks and Rec. They kind of put out a poll with what they were recommending. They recommended a walking path that's wheelchair accessible, and then there was, um, they had it as an open question on what the town would like to see. I did see pickleball, I saw dog park, I saw, there's a couple of different things. So I think the, the need for it is there.
It's the number one growing activity.
It's been, it's been growing for.
So, I mean, I don't, I mean, I, I know that I've talked to people that go down to Waterboro and play. There's people that play kind of halfway down in Lake Arrowhead, they sneak on the courts and it's not really designed for it, and they go down there, so. I think if we make it, they'll come, and it, and it's a, the biggest expense if we ever want to do this would be that pad. And the pad really has been kind of just never really taken off for, for anything other than that. I think this makes good use of it. It gives room to put the pavilion up, so if people want to watch, well, somebody, it's the, the courts would be on the, the lakeside, call it, so the pavilion could be on the end so people could watch pickleballers play if they wanted, or they can watch the playground. That, you know, that playground, that playground is there, I mean, there's people there every day on that new playground. They want to do similar around the old playground where they, um, border it in to hold the chips in place and refurbish the old one. I'm, I'm glad to hear, there's been a lot of talk about ripping the old one out, and as I've said for years, I got a kind of a sentimental piece for that because we put it in by hand. I mean, Dean, you were there digging holes, right? It's, you know, that was a, that was a lot of work to put that in. And structurally, it's still sound. The paint's faded, we need to replace a piece of plexi, the plexiglass window, but other than that, I think refurbishing, that's a great idea. So I guess if we could just, I don't know if we want to vote to go out to bid on the fence and see where that comes in, that's going to be the.
We should have the figures before we roll on the whole thing.
Yep, so can we go out to bid for the fence?
Yes, I make a motion to go out to bid for.
We should have the figures on everything.
Yeah, the other ones are, are small number, yeah.
I mean, even though it doesn't work out, 10 years down the road, you stood at the concrete.
You still have, you still have it, I mean, it's still.
The coating on it.
Well, it might last longer that way.
And then it turns back into tennis courts. All right, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'll write up a bid for the fence and bring it next week for everybody to see.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, you know, we've, we've gone, it's been a tough few months, tough year for the, for this board, and, um, without the help of Alicia, uh, we'd be dead. I'm sorry, we would be, we would be underwater, okay? She's a rock that, I mean, everybody can admit it. If you don't, you're, you're blind. We gave her a little raise last year to beef her up. I mean, she goes so far above and beyond, um, everything.
If you were to look at emails, I mean, you were to look at emails.
Seven, eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night.
She was on vacation and I.
From the airport, from the plane.
She was on vacation, I texted her, three minutes later I got a response, I mean, it's.
It doesn't, it, it's not even going to come close to covering what she puts in for time, but I want to make a recommendation that we give Alicia a one-time bonus of $2,500.
I would second that. There's a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
I don't think we should be giving anybody bonuses if they're on a salary, or they're given compensation now from the town.
So I think, I mean, maybe I can agree with that, but we can, we can do hourly, and every hour that Alicia works, then I think we should pay if we want to do that.
You could do it, I mean, if she, if she, if she punched in for every hour she worked, it'd be a lot more than this, so. What's that?
She's not hourly.
No, she's hourly.
No, hourly.
She's hourly, I mean.
I just want to say, guys, this lady answers what we do in all this event planning and stuff. I would come at 10 o'clock at night and think, oh my, I've got to ask Alicia, and she looked too strong. She's strong on, she's on the weekend, she's been there helping us, this community creating events.
And I agree, I mean, I, the other day, there was, we, I was talking to somebody at the fire station, and I was like, you know what? I do have a question on when that contract ends, and I could very well have looked it up, but I voiced a text Alicia, and before my phone even locked, Alicia said, oh, that contract ends this day, I have it on my list to bring up with you guys in two meetings. So, I mean, she, she goes above and beyond her job. I truly, I have said this to anybody who I've talked about, Alicia too, that without Alicia, I mean, everybody has said that, you know, the board is doing amazing, and I say the board's not doing amazing, Alicia is doing amazing. Alicia is the one who keeps this board together and notes, and I couldn't run the meeting without her notes, I mean, come on.
So where do you hope to get this $2,500?
From the administrative salary account.
I also agree, I'd call poor Alicia on Saturday or Sunday because that's when I'm working and she's on the weekend, but I always end up somehow texting her on Saturday or Sunday, and she gets right back to me and.
Alicia picks up her phones on her power walks with, for me, I mean.
She texts me on her vacation.
I got a call on her vacation, so I'm better.
Let's go to Alicia and get out of here, because we could stay here all night.
Yes.
Talking about all the good things she does.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Is there any other hearing of citizens? I'm seeing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Thank you.